Oh, good, we're in the big screen. So SDCs are over the long haul. It's not just the five-year CIP. So the five-year CIP funding is within this five-year plan, but your SDC methodology has both improvement fees as well as reimbursement fees. So I think just this question means we need to get that foundation laid down, right? About SDCs and how they work, how they link to the annual budget, how they link to the five-year CIP.
And how you report on.
Correct, correct. Because the reason why Clean Water Services has been successful is because we do this long-range planning.
No one's disputing the success or not. It's why are there two different entries on the list with? The only difference is the last word.
It's just so helpful. So, yeah. So part of this is, this is really good info because we have been using this sort of nomenclature and we'll be able to do that now.
It may work inside the organization, but for me as a board member, it's. Can't relate to it.
Okay, we'll help with that.
Beaverton IGA, I've turned the page.
Yeah, so the intergovernmental agreement update, so we're going through that.
It's been on the list. It was, it's been carried forward from 2023 to 2024 out of 2025. And I'm going to close this while.
I can bring up some of my likes. Beaverton has an attorney that's been looking at it with fresh eyes. She has some clarification language that Brad and I have been working with her. They're not substantive changes, it's more just language.
So, so it sounds to me then like CWS feels like it's, it's done, but we have to get the latest partner player approvals.
And it's kind of scheduled for March.
That's, that's a lot different than just a blank.
Yeah, and if we're hoping by March, maybe get into April, new attorney looking at it with fresh eyes. And the same thing in Cornelius, the attorney's looking at it, has a lot of questions.
So this is the first time I'm hearing that Cornelius one has moved forward because prior, we were told Beaverton and Hillsborough, Beaverton and Hillsborough, Beaverton and Hillsborough, and then the others will follow. So this is the first time.
Chair, we've been working on Cornelius along. So I'm.
We didn't get an update of 2024 in June, as I recall, that said, oh yeah, Cornelius is now in play. That's all.
And going forward, we're currently working with Washington County. They're actually, we'll see when that.
And that's specific to the UUAs, right?
Correct.
So it's Washington County UUA.
It's a, it's a LUT agreement also, so.
Oh, for county-wide, right?
Right, right.
And it's not on your chair and board members. We just started talking to Walton about their operating idea.
So it should be initiated.
Yeah.
Boy, if you. You need to hire somebody from Intel.
I was hoping, sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what the need, what the need is and we'll be able to do that.
So for all of your, what's that Baldr to board stuff? Yeah, anyway, okay.
I hear you, yeah. We're going to. Yeah, I, I see what we need to do process-wise. So then the CWAC appointments that came before the board on 9/16. For the board information, we are going to be bringing you updates on our organizational development initiatives, the regulatory compliance strategies, and the, and also the roadmap updates. So you can see and have input on the strategic roadmap and how that will roll into the, the day-to-day work of the district.
So on your strategic roadmaps, I think this is where, for example, climate action. I remember when we had our learning day over at the facility ops place near Merlot. What do we call that building?
Oh, field operation.
Yes, yeah. And that's when Ting talked about the modeling for climate action and. You're at a, wasn't that through a meeting with you guys where there was discussion about how climate modeling is able to move toward granular scale? So this is one where I'm wondering, how do we signify the, the evolution and the progression? I was just using that as one example for how the state of these three, how they've evolved from initial definition to, you know, sort of a rev one, rev two versus rev one versus rev three. Because you're very much a learning organization and it advancement. And so how do we want both the board and the community to know how you're moving forward with this?
And we indicated the, the work now can be utilized actually with our master planning. So you were down last night, you know, at the Clean Water Central. So we'll update you on our roadmaps and where we're going. We still owe you a ripple business plan, so that's still in progress.
When does Ripple become Ripple?
Ripple, we're working through the legal aspects of the Clean Water Institute becoming Clean Water Ripple, but we're also working through the actual facility itself.
No, but you guys, but we've been talking about Ripple for years.
Yeah. Our continual work on it, so. Okay, the research and innovation team, they did a presentation last board learning and they talked about the projects that they're doing. And they're really trying to get the business plan for the return on investments so that the board can see that. The team is preparing their district ride facility, planning and property updates. We did your feedback, we need to really center the board on what the necessity is for all these buildings and to go through that.
I would really like to understand what part of the organization is moving into central and what part of the organization is staying at ABC until Ripple can accommodate them? What are the goals for all of that? And how do we, how are we clear on what parts of ABC are closed down? Otherwise, it just sounds like.
Yeah, so Jack and Rick are working on that built occupied building report. So that's what's going on right now. We're going to prepare for you to see what the quick end performance has been. And then Jack and Mario sort of putting together the whole insurance program so we can review that with the board, both of what's insured by third parties, what is self-insured versus what is insured by credit. But we thought that was an important piece for the board.
So that's more of an insurance review?
Yeah, it's an insurance review.
I don't, I don't want us to be put in a situation of being pulled into quick governance.
This is more about the performance. Skogg and Stan, today you're going to hear a briefing of where that project is. And then the board learning going forward. We, we talked to the chair and got some feedback as well as from Director Snyder that really it's moved from just board learning. It's not training, it's really a board work session with Clean Water Services.
Well, it's never been ORS qualified training. And we have to perform per ORS. So that's where the word training gets us into trouble, even though it's the innocent use of the word training.
Yeah, so we're going to.
These are board work sessions.
That's what we're going to call these from, from going forward with the public notice and etc.
We've always public noticed these. So for the record, they've always been public noticed.
We did receive feedback that we needed to have a better way for the public to navigate our website to get to the public notice and the agendas in the past of meetings. So that's going to go forward. And there's two.
Which I would say, relative to all the topics on the 2025 list, to the degree that you're referring to, like a 201 or a 101 for the last review of this, those packets need to be available on the website.
So the team is also making sure when they bring their reports forward to the board that it's linking to the past items. So you have that for all of your review. And then the next two travel items, we're starting to plan and we're going to have a discussion later today. There's a DC policy fly-in for water and we're going to organize for that. And then West Tech in October, late September, early October. But that's the items looking forward. We'll, we'll do an update on this, the format and how we're reporting on this. In 2024, this is sort of, we use this truncated and clipped some topics, but there's a, in your packet, it's where we are, which board learnings they came to and what's in progress for all of these. So the question is, did you want me to go through some detail on the 2024?
Well, 2024 is over, so I don't understand how something could still be in progress. I'm expecting this to be. How, what is the state of affair relative to the 2024 expected outcome? And, you know, there could be multi-year things, but I can't tell if the Beasians just mean that it slipped or or if the 2020 since, yeah. So towards next year, what I would expect at the end of 2025 is, did they reach the milestone for 2025? Or is it not complete? To read what the 2026 is. It's 2026, so otherwise, we can't tell the performance of the organization.
I appreciate that. And right now, the team, so Elizabeth and Jack are leading the team to actually do the progress in the performance reporting. So that's what they're developing now. So we'll make sure that when we do that reporting to the board so that you have it orderly, that will tie it to the subtopics. So you'll be able to have that. And we thought that the county did a really nice job with the way that they're doing their progress and reporting. So the team is looking for that. And they're going to innovate. Okay, so I think we captured a lot of things I need to do for this to make it more readable and understandable for the board and actually scoping it more and telling you what the milestones and points are. So we'll be doing that. Thank you. With this next item on the legislative overview. Thank you very much, Daya. So I want to welcome to the electronic room Pete Eivich with Van Scoeck. Christina Surfus with NACO will be joining shortly. And we have Tracy Rainey, who was our government relations manager here. One thing I want to note before we jump into it is we prepared these slides in advance and things have been moving fast in periods. So we will note updates and changes as we go through because the lay of the land has changed somewhat in the past couple of weeks. With you, I have, and getting the slides pulled up. And folks also have them in their packet. But Tracy, I want to introduce yourself while we get the materials pulled up.
Yeah, thanks so much. Yeah, thank you for this opportunity for providing update. And Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services. And as Elizabeth mentioned, it's been really fast and furious with the 2025 state legislative session. So we appreciate an opportunity to spend a little time today to do a bit of a deeper dive on our legislative priorities. I know that you received an update from your county government relations team on Tuesday during work session. I did connect with Erin Doyle and she wanted to be part of that. But in light of today's opportunity to do this presentation, I told her, no, thank you, but we will be joining the county government relations team for future work session updates on the legislative agenda. So we'll be seeing you again in later February. So let's see, we'll wait for the slides to pull up. I don't know if you want Pete or Christina to introduce themselves now or wait till later?
I think once they jump into their sections, that'll be a good opportunity. And the other thing is, it's nice for us to get a little bit of extra time to do a baseline with you on where things are legislatively, even at the state level, knowing that Tracy will join the GR team for Washington County in the coming weeks. But there's a lot going on in Salem, so we'll also touch on that before moving into the front side, so.
Great. We've got the wrong presentation. I think the legislative one.
Yeah.
Let's swap that out, team. Well, why don't we have folks have jackets in front of them? Yeah, let's keep moving.
I feel like one of the presentations, so you just need to get.
Oh, just a little quick. I'll switch you.
There we go.
There it is.
Okay. So I was just saying that we will be joining the county government relations team for future work sessions. And we did not do it this past week, Chair, because we had today. And I knew I got to do a deep dive with you all. So we'll see you again in, I guess, maybe three weeks, I think it's kind of.
No, this is, this is fine. We have this special additional supplemental roundtable to try and glean from Van Scoeck what this new administration might mean. And we were just trying to be proactive, knowing what was talked about through the election. So that was a start. Then, of course, boom, stuff happened. And now we're trying to catch up on the Washington County side. So we knew we had this learning day on the books. So don't worry, you're 100% doing the right things. It's like, okay, what does it mean for EPA regulations? And which, for me, it's like, which end is up? We don't function out of chaos, right? Our, our rate payers want their wastes to be treated. So how do we define what we're aiming for between us and the EQ? Do we keep staying the course? Or do we get on the horn with our legislative delegation saying, this is untenable? I, I don't know what, so.
The horn will be revealed.
I'm excited for the conversation, not excited about the chaos that excited for the conversation. So yeah, we'll put a little bit of time, very, very briefly, just touching on back here, local, some of the local elections. A number of newly elected councillors, mayors, and how we're going to do education outreach with them, get them up to speed on what we do. We'll spend a fair amount of time on our state legislative agenda and talking through the priorities that the board adopted for the 2025 state legislative session. And then we'll shift into the federal updates from our lobbyist, Van Scoeck and associate Pete Eivich. And then from Christina Surfus as well will join us from National Association Clean Water Agency. She is their government relations manager. So we're excited that she'll be joining us. And then finally, we'll spend, as Elizabeth mentioned, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about Skoggings, which is, again, you know, one of our biggest federal priorities and giving you an update on where we are with that project. So any questions about the order of things or areas that we're touching on?
I wondered if there was any breaking news from the CDC this morning?
I know, probably. Feels like every day ever since March. This is on the break. So as I mentioned, we do have a considerable number of newly elected city councillors and mayors that were either recently elected or there were a number of vacancies that were filled or job closed for. So with that, it's an opportunity to engage in outreach and education about Clean Water Services, what we do and how we partner with cities. So I'll turn over to maybe Joe and Elizabeth really quickly to talk about our CWS essentials that started tonight.
Right.
I can start. The chair was there, thank you for attending. We had a good session last night. A lot of obviously new elected officials that know very little about CWS, just a basic understanding. They were very engaged, lots of great questions. Did a tour of the lab. That went very well. A lot of folks had no idea we had a lab and what we do and just layers of information and feeling young in back in terms of what we do. And then we will repeat that tomorrow here, the same program. And then we will do a tour of this facility for tomorrow's session. And I believe Chair will be here as well. Director Snyder is going to try to come for the tour. He's actually never been through this facility, at least in the recent past. And then one of the attendees last night from Durham actually is coming for the tour as well because he wants to see this. And he's back here, so it went very well. And we will continue to do that, so.
This is a, this is a great program. And I really applaud you guys for coming up with this idea. I was thinking in my eight years as mayor, I don't think I ever crossed over into any facilities of Clean Water Services since I wanted something. So. So this is great information, this information is key.
Yeah, and I think that for me and my role, it's building relationships and getting elected officials for our different cities. And if there's ever issues, who to call and, and things like that. So Hillsborough had councillors there last night as well, Mayor Pace. Very, very engaged, lots of great questions, so. And we're going to be looking for more opportunities to continue to educate. We also had some county LVT staff there who asked me if they could go through it because they have bits and pieces of CWS, but they didn't necessarily have an overview. Erin Waddell, Jessica Peltz were there last night and they really enjoyed it. And Stephen Robinson with your tar. So I think we're looking for more ways in terms of educating our, our partners.
Yeah, I think one of the things that people forget is a huge part of advocacy is building relationships before you need them and educating people. And so we're trying to lay those foundations. And I think Joe's done a fabulous job in developing this program.
And the experts were the ones giving the presentation. So it was really the team was providing the basics on the core business aspects. So there's more we can do, but limited time.
You know what I just realized as you were describing all of this? This is the first time that I've had a job. This is year seven for me. I've never done the same job for more than, well, other than being a metro councillor for greater than three years. Yeah, because by year four, I'm usually bored and I'm. Actually, more than here. Well, that is true. You're, you're right about that. But this, this refresh on relationships is really impactful for me because it's, it's the business newness that, for, for my personality, being so results-oriented, business results-oriented, that really trips my trigger. So seeing the, the value and the need on, on the relationship side is really, really helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll shift into our state legislative agenda discussion. And I should have mentioned, I know we'll take a break at some point during this presentation. So I think I'll let Elizabeth to figure out what that takes.
Sure, and so we're going to read the room. And when a, when a bio break, it'll just a stretching of legs, it's necessary. We will do that because we know that it's dense.
Can I comment on state? And Christina may be having connective problems. So if somebody could help her. On the state side, there are a few things that have me not concerned, maybe just wondering. So Ken Helm has been so water-focused. Well, how do we build another compatriot in the Washington County caucus that is mindful of Clean Water Services? I think we've got to figure that out in '25, '26. But then, I'll just say, as one member of five, I am worn out by the number of appointments we've had to do for the state legislature. So this is outside of the scope of your job, probably. But I don't know how to get the message across to leadership that, hey, you guys got to clean up your act, so to speak, and make sure that we don't have this total churn. The other thing that I'm wondering about from your, your standpoint with the legislature is it's a good thing that we have more Washington County caucus members in leadership. But I have found that once they get in leadership, they're like, oh no, I can't advocate for Washington County or Clean Water Services District. I can only advocate statewide because of my leadership or just for my district so I get reelected. And it's like, that means we've lost yet another caucus member. Not really lost, but functionally lost. So anyway, maybe I, maybe I took my cynical pill this morning and I need to get it out of my system.
Well, I think, I think it would be fair to have that discussion with Ken Helm because he's, he doesn't want his work left behind, I, you know.
Yeah, but he doesn't own it by himself, right? And I don't know if the Washington County caucus members realize the magnitude.
Yeah. To us.
Yeah, so how do we motivate them to do their homework into that?
Yeah, because I think on both those spaces, you know, I know we're not going to have Ken Helm around forever. And, and we really, you know, having worked in water policy for a really long time when I was at Lincoln Morgan Cities prior, it was hard to find anyone who cared at all about water. And then Ken Helm came along. So we had a couple that maybe would be a little bit of a deeper dive, but, you know, he showed up, he has a fish ring on, like, he is in, in this space. And I think he's done a great job of trying to get his colleagues excited and engaged about water and make the connection to the things that other members care about, like that, that, that connection that's happening. But I think absolutely, we need to be working on our delegation here within, within our service territory to, to get that next iteration. Susan McLean is on that House AG, one of these Natural Resources and Water Committee, but she is very, as we know, a transportation package. So, you know, she, she's been a fantastic supporter for us, but.
I also want to jump in and give kudos to Tracy because shortly before I started in May, she had just taken the Water Caucus on a tour of our facilities. Yeah, right? So using that interim period, you can only get so far in those 15-minute meetings as we did during practice. But using the, the sort of off-season to bring people to our facilities and inspire them and get them excited. And that's actually one of the goals that we have and have looked at. What lawmakers do we want to make sure come through our facilities so that they have that affinity toward us and understanding? And you can lift up our expertise and play that really important role on Salem.
And I will say, so that Water Caucus, and we're kind of skipping around, but I think that's great because I like the conversation. But that Water Caucus, I looked last night just to see the update. They've got 29 members of the state legislative Water Caucus, which is something that Representative Ken Helm and Representative Mark Owens, the Republican from eastern Oregon, who's co-chairing the House AG, landing its natural resource committee, which again, except this before, but we don't have any other legislative committee in Oregon where they are voluntarily sharing a gamble 50-50% between the majority party and the minority party. So you've got a really a tone set for bipartisan work and finding solutions that both sides of the aisle can get behind. Not to say that it goes perfectly or smooth all the time. There's going to be controversial issues that come up in front of that committee. But while they are really putting. But while they are really putting their weight behind trying to enhance significant water policy and seeing 29 members of legislature that want to be part of the Water Caucus is really encouraging news. So I, I will say that that is really exciting to see that. And it was really great to have that, that group out.
Well, having everyone's here, that is great. That is really great.
Yes. Yeah. So, and they have hired a full-time chief of staff for the Water Caucus. So they have somebody in the building who's working solely on water policy right now, which is also incredibly helpful. Because as we all know, their offices are all very overwhelmed with a million things coming at them. So that's been great. So as we all know, I don't really need to talk about super majorities of all chambers. We know the dynamics, you know, obviously impacts, you know, I think the overall negotiations and whether or not there is a need for negotiation. So when you're trying to pass revenue raising measures, if you need some votes, then you may be willing to talk about other policy issues and either not pass something or pass something in order to get those votes, that kind of trade off. So that won't be at play as much as legislative session. In terms of high level on water policy, we are expecting to see another omnibus water package. There's a possibility that there would be some specific project funding that may be incorporated in that. It's not clear yet, but in 2023, the legislature did pass a pretty significant water package. It was over a hundred million dollars of investment in a variety of agency programs, staffing, project specific items. And so that, that is something that Representative Helm and Representative Owens are working on session. The price tag is way, way too high. So the conversation will be around what makes it in and what has to get trimmed off of that. Obviously, that's going to be impacted by our overall budget picture and the revenue forecast and all the moving parts that comes with the uncertainty of state budget right now, we'll just say. So let's see here. So we are talking, I will mention just quickly that we are talking about the Clean Water Services, Western Washington County Influent Infiltration Rehabilitation Project, which the chair is not here. We are talking about that as a potential, if there is an opportunity for getting state funding for water specific project. We did receive again federal funding through an earmark that Congresswoman Wannabe Too was able to get for us for that project. That is to repair aging pipes in Forest Grove that are experiencing inflow and infiltration, which means too much water is coming into the, in the pipes through the groundwater and it means too much water is coming into our water resource recovery facility. So the average age of the pipes out there is 88 years old. So they are, they are deteriorating. So the federal funding was just stretched out of a million dollars. The project's about six million. So we're looking for interstate dollars that we can add to make sure we can get that reduction, you know, that we beat out that project.
Is that one completely like already approved or is that one that's hanging in the?
The earmark is, and he could probably speak to this as well. Last I had, I, last I can, I called Pete. He made me feel a lot better that that earmark funding should not be at risk.
But it's still part of the, what's, what is dependent on some congressional action.
Yeah. Well, if it is the congressional action already happened, I think that's why it's more secure is.
Well, it's for the.
I guess. No, it's not in the balance of reconciliation versus continuance. It's already been appropriated. What's the right word, Pete?
Well, it's.
Allocated and appropriated?
It has been appropriated.
You're on mute, pal.
I'm on, am I on mute? Oh, shoot.
Is that our problem? Oh, boy.
Uh-oh. Can you hear me now? Christina can hear me.
So look, he can, he can chime in with the right words on that, but. The sound, the sound is muted.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
There he is.
Still can't hear you. It's our problem.
Yeah.
You, you can hear me?
You know, since we haven't got time before the federal update piece, that we can work through that. So. Okay. So there will be, as I mentioned, there's going to be some controversial conversations as part of that broader water omnibus package. One of the big, most controversial, I think, pieces in that is going to be just a discussion around additional conditions for water rate transfers. So as an example, if drinking water provider needed to move their intake, maybe downstream for a variety of reasons that that could happen, there would be an additional review to see if that moving the intake would impact stream flow. So currently, you've got a lot of ability to just make that change, that transfer of the water rate in those spaces in terms of where you're pulling the water out of the stream. This has been an ongoing conversation between consumptive water users and environmental groups for a very long time, that they would like to make sure that when those things happen, there is no impact to stream flow and fish. So that one is going to be a pretty significant issue to try and get through that package. And it's gotten, I think it's going to make it a little more complex for trying to get support behind the package of that piece. We've looked at that because we do have water rights at Clean Water Services. But the good news, when I talked to our technical staff, our water rights are for flow. And so they are in stream. And so even if we're doing a transfer, that type of review shouldn't impact what we're doing. So in the omnibus bill, there'll be a couple of items that do relate directly to our, our board adopted state legislative priorities as well. So I'll touch them. Trying to advance slide.
I'll just say for the state legislature, while it may be in the omnibus water package, I just am feeling very cynical about the state legislature. And I think when it comes time for ways and means that everything but education is going to just get jettisoned and then they're going to try and cobble things back in. Education and housing and that, you know, will get breadcrumbs.
And we'll, we'll talk about that too, because you know, one of our priorities, as you know, is the DEQ budget for the water quality division. And you know, even going into session, we were already looking at breadcrumbs. And so you layer on the, the potential impacts in terms of, you know, funding available and that, that's a challenge for sure for us. So I'm going to touch briefly on each of our board adopted legislative priorities that meet up our 2025 agenda and provide an update on relevant legislation that we're seeing in those spaces. The first one is our infrastructure related priority. And I think you can hear you, Pete.
Oh, you can hear me?
That's wonderful. Okay, great. Yeah. No, thank you. Did you want to answer that question or go back to that, Pete, the chair and us?
You know what I'll touch upon, I could touch upon it when I, in my remarks, because I do, I do mention the, the funding freeze. So.
Great. Perfect. Okay. So on our infrastructure priority, very intentional in the way that we worded this. And we've got kind of those three, what I kind of the three pillars, if you will, which are infrastructure to promote protection of water quality, public health, infrastructure for supporting maintenance and improvements to existing systems, things like aging infrastructure, and then building capacity to support convenient growth, including housing production. The conversation that we are working and having with legislators is we need all three. I know housing production is a huge priority shared by many legislators. It's fantastic to see that they're having conversations around increasing investment in water related infrastructure for housing production. It's great. At the same time, they've got to continue to invest in our aging infrastructure systems that may or may not be in direct connection. I can make an argument that it all connects to housing, but it's clear that some of the site specific things that they're looking to fund. And then all, all of course, those projects that protect public health and the environment. So we're not seeing that level of excitement about making those investments and we're trying to make sure that they don't forget those pieces.
What this has taught me is that when we adopt a future legislative agenda, instead of saying existing systems, we need to say existing aging systems.
I think aging is a really valuable word in that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got it. You're, yeah, but so we're watching, there's an investment, $60 million proposed for the special public parks fund. That would be in Business Oregon's budget and was part of the governor's budget, supports a variety of infrastructure types, including water, but primarily loans. So it's not something that we've looked at as Clean Water Services for ready reasons, but it's been really important for a number of utilities. And again, the more infrastructure investment that's happening across the state, the better for everyone, Clean Clean Water Services. There is an update in the slide as I just got an amendment this past week from the governor's office that is bill that's a placeable bill. It's House Bill 3031. There will be an amendment that will be a gut stuff of that bill and it would provide housing, infrastructure investment. And in the initial review, this is a little, this is very breaking news because it doesn't, doesn't, this is it. The exciting news is they've actually explicitly included special districts, including county service districts under ORIS 451, and it'd be that boost. The VADIS is the way that the program would function. It would exclude any kind of capacity related infrastructure improvements. Because it's trying to directly tie the investment to number of units produced with affordability patterns attached. That's not something that we as a special district, county service provider have control over. We're providing capacity to serve these developments, but we cannot say, do not know if that is going to be X number of units are. So they didn't intend to maybe exclude us, but it really is the way that would work with excluding. So we're providing that feedback to the governor's office. But we had that conversation with them before. So we'll see if we're able to get some of that.
Well, cities can't do that either unless they're talking about individual permitted sites.
It's very.
It's like the intent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can't really be achieved.
It's interesting, right? Because it's really what it's talking about then is site specific infrastructure, which oftentimes would be paid for with SDCs. And so it's an interesting conversation to exclude overall capacity pump stations, upsizing a truck line. So we continue to have that conversation to educate them on how infrastructure is designed and delivered. The next bill I'll mention is for opportunities for additional state investments in water infrastructure for industrial, commercial expansion opportunities. Yet another bill that is not on this because it is new and developing is House Bill 2411. And that would authorize and provide funding for the industrial site loan fund. Forty million dollars proposed, which.
It was a great handout in the AOC government relations packet. For either today's meeting or Wednesday's meeting. I don't remember.
So still. Yeah, I'm still in schedule for a public hearing. So similar to the thoughts around that new amendment language in the governor's office, I don't see that a special district in this one would be eligible for that funding. And so that is something that will work to see if there's opportunities to expand that out to include other types of infrastructure providers. I will say, I worked with a special districts association for a really long time when I was with the cities and they always would say, no one, no one includes us, no one understands us. And I kind of thought that. Now I see, I'm, I'm, I see it.
That's she's the one.
So preserving local infrastructure financing tools for water infrastructure really just surround largely SDCs, though that could be inclusive of conversations around water rates, which we've seen in the past. And the bills that we're watching, House Bill 2138 is Governor's middle housing bill. We'll talk about that a little bit more from a different lens, but it does have language in there with, that would have SDC adopted rules to have more off the shelf SDC products available for communities. So kind of model SDCs, if you will. They are working on that language. We have not seen how it will evolve and change. But one size fits all is really tough on the SDC. So we'll be watching carefully to see where that goes. The other bill that we've seen before that's passed again this session is House Bill 2968, which would be a voluntary deferral of SDCs to certificate of occupancy. This is the bill that Representative Mark Gambis brought before, would create a state fund so that if local government defers that collection of SDCs and the developer doesn't pay, that the local government would go to the state for payment and then the state would deal with the delinquency issue with the developer. So trying to take out that risk that I think has been noted as a concern for local governments if they are going to defer. I mentioned already the DEQ budget.
Out of the, the the Oregon Home Builders Association a party to that responsibility. No, I mean. These LLCs are set up for a reason.
Yeah. And of course, with that one, we do worry about it's voluntary. And then if no one participates, does that conversation turn into a becoming mandatory? So on the DEQ budget, again, going into the session, the governor's instructions to agencies was 1% above current service levels. One of the challenges with natural resource agencies is they are probably underfunded. So, but I think the latest numbers is like 2.4% of general funds are going to Oregon's working natural resource agencies. And so when you are fighting over breadcrumbs, you know, 1% is not, it's not much. You know, and there's certain mixed and targeted investments in DEQ's water quality program that we'd like to see. Again, the conversation we're having with legislators is we can't be innovative if they're not positioned to support us in that because there is that permitting regulatory component. And that kind of flexibility and working with somebody on something new is not easy to do and requires staff resource. So we're trying to make sure legislators understand that connection. I think DEQ can be looked at as regulatory and it's just not popular. But we have to have the function to do the work. A water reuse is an exciting, exciting conversation right now. It's up for a public hearing on Monday. And so this is a bill that is building off of legislation that was passed in 2023 that we worked to introduce and were able to get passed through the session. That bill was looking to have DEQ update the regulatory framework for reuse in Oregon. That hasn't been updated in decades and looked at reuse as a waste. So how do you, how do you get rid of a waste in a responsible way as opposed to, you know, reuse as a beneficial resource and opportunity for communities?
If I could, I'll segue here for a minute. Diane, I think the board would benefit from, and it could be later today, an explanation on the state of affairs of water reuse. Because through prior learning days, we've actually spent some extensive time on how we had the purple type investments in Rock Creek, how you had wanted to acquire that golf course just south of Ruve Bridge Park. That hasn't, that, a whole bunch of work, a whole bunch of talk with us went through and that isn't happening. Yes, I heard a new update last night and I don't know if this board has received that update. So I don't know, maybe it's on the agenda already, but I just want to make sure it's noted and you come back to it before we leave today.
New update on the golf course, but just on reuse.
I said the golf course project is gone.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Right. No, I, I was speaking to an update on water reuse.
Okay.
Beyond just this legislative stuff.
And we will be, Jared Kinnear, who was there last night, I mean, for, for will be providing testimony on Monday. So it's very limited. They want to keep the hearing really short. There's a lot on the agenda, but Jared does such a fantastic job getting people excited about reuse. So and he'll be, yeah, making the dragon statement on Monday. And there's a chance that the reuse bill will be incorporated into that water omnibus package. It is proposed at this point in time as one of the bills that is up for consideration as far as the overall package. So that's good news. The biggest piece in here that we would like to see is continuation of the position that was approved in 2023 for DEQ that had a dedicated reuse coordinator. They were not able to fill that position. That had a dedicated reuse coordinator and were not able to fill that position until July of twenty twenty four. So that person has just started about six months ago and that funding will expire at the end of this by any. So we really want to see that that position continues to be authorized and funded going forward. Um, supporting policies and investments promote resource recovery, including renewable energy production, nutrient recovery, water resources. There's a bill that Representative Helm has brought forward uh at the request of the Center for Sustainable Infrastructure. They're an organization that has taken legislators, policymakers, utilities on these tours to Denmark. To look at an industrial symbiosis um operation out there. Where you've got a bunch of different industries that are co-located and are sharing resources. So a lot of things that would be waste that are turned into commodity um and shared across industry. When they did the tour of our facility um with the Water Caucus in May. They saw the biogas and we talked about our relationship with Brew Doctor and. They saw kind of that opportunity for what they would call industrial symbiosis, um, including our uh phosphorus recovery. Renewable energy generation, they had all these different pieces and they've been having these conversations with Denmark. So we are talking to Representative Helm's office about ways that that bill could be useful and helpful to help our utility, but also help other utilities in these newer types of things.
Yeah, but a lot of that depends on co-location and the availability of land. Yes, we don't have that, can you tell I. With this space, there's a metro council with industrial lands already.
Yeah, no, it's absolutely true. So I think they're trying to see what infrastructure we have, it definitely will not look like Denmark. Like it, it just will not function in that way. So they're looking at opportunities that are going to be probably not as like symbiotic, I guess, as that. Um, but I know they're talking to a story about some of the, there's a water quality issue with fish processing, I think. And there's some opportunity to kind of help them and, you know, so there's a, there's six different areas they've been looking at. So we'll be, we'll be anxious to kind of see how that conversation evolves and if there are opportunities that are useful for us in that space.
Well, go ahead, Pam, if you would.
Well, I was, I, I, we're, we're looking at each other because we had a, a, a similar experience in Toronto. When we uh visited a wastewater treatment that was in, but to Catherine's point, it was in a land use. Situation where there were already guaranteed uh buildings and it was off, it was a closed circuiting relationship to. The, the ability to use the wastewater as a heating opportunity and as electrical generation. So they were all, but it was in that closed environment.
Yeah, they have a huge anchor tenant.
Yeah.
They, that's going to get them going initially, but from, from our standpoint, we wish to ever consider doing something like that. We would have to get way ahead of the ball and almost develop a plan and land and then say to suitors, this is what we got. And uh, quite frankly, the cost of utilities and everything, uh, and looking out into the future and that. That may be an attraction if we can say if it may ha- help you manage some cost controls. Um, I don't know, it's better to take, to take a huge investment, that's what we do. So I don't know how we do that, but.
Um, yeah, no, well, we will see how that evolves and again, I, I think it will look a little different for Oregon, there's no way around it. The relating to clause on that bill though is relating to the circular economies, so yeah, I don't know, it might not be a circle, we might be a little more.
Like abstract.
So the uh, the priority that, that you all adopted on water utility responsiveness, efficiency and resiliency. Um, there's a couple of bills that we're tracking in that space. One is a water workforce bill that the Lake Morgan Cities is bringing forward as a priority. It's still just like a concept, so hoping it becomes a bill really soon because we're, we're already really in the process, but. Um, really excited that that conversation is happening in Oregon about what do we do to get more people in that workforce? And including working in high schools to make sure that people understand there's a career pathway that may be available to them. Um, there are only two community policy programs right now um that uh can provide that learning for operators. Um, in every community I'm hearing from is having really significant challenging challenges finding. By the workforce, the workforce challenges exist everywhere, that is not, you know, that is, that is absolutely true. But I think this is one where we've got to have people there certified to run these facilities, so. Um, that's an exciting conversation that we're seeing. We're also engaging in discussions around funding for invasive species, so the Oregon Invasive Species Council. Uh, the work that they do is really critical, including for Emerald Ashore, other invasive species as well. Um, so we're working that space and then PFAS is the last one I will touch on, it is really quite busy. This is our priority around emerging contaminants. Um, the Association of Clean Water Agencies, I think the number one bill to look at there is House Bill twenty nine forty seven, the biosolid study bill. Uh, the Association of Clean Water Agencies is bringing that bill forward again, this is, I think, the third time they brought it forward. It would be providing funding through Oregon State University to do a study uh the occurrence of PFAS in land applied biosolids. Um, and trying to get a picture of what that looks like across the states and for a variety of different locations. Um, there are similar studies that are happening on the national scale. And as we already know from the testing and the work we've done in Oregon, you see a lot of lower levels of PFAS than other states are grappling with. So this would give us good data to make informed policy decisions here in Oregon. We're seeing a number of states that are um passing bans on biosolid application. Um, and, and not doing so in a way that is using, I mean, sound data to inform the policy decision. So we, we know that the more data we have here in Oregon, the better decisions that we can make between utilities, DEQ and the legislature.
So is there a, is there a general thought or understanding among that. Sort of scientific and operational experts here about why Oregon is not seeing. But is it, do we think that's real or is it because of a higher level of. Environmental regulation that we've had or what is the, what is the thinking on why that might be that seems odd?
The states that are having significant PFAS problems is because they have a primary PFAS chemical manufacturer.
Okay, and we just don't. Okay, thank you.
It's the upside of not having a good manufacturing. Things here in Oregon really, so we certainly see it, but again, um, the levels that we see uh tend to be a lot lower than many, many states.
So Tracy, if I could, that's a couple of things. Going back to your water workforce legislation, um. Last night, Pam and Defisa and I were at the hundred and seventy fifth uh anniversary of Pacific University. And one of the things the president said was uh they have a declining enrollment because they have declining kids coming through the systems. And um, and a declining interest in uh secondary ed. So going on to colleagues, they just don't see a purpose and a rate of return on that. So what kind of an education would they have to have to be able to enter into this water workforce environment? How much education outside buys?
Yeah, so for operators and mechanics and field operations, they would have to have a high school and some community college. That's probably all that they need, we can do a lot with high school graduates.
And does PCC offer that community college?
No, it's not, Clackamas Community College, Allyn Benton used to have it, but I think it, it declined.
That's what she was talking about that on, well, slide seven, no, slide uh eight. With the water workforce legislation, how there are only two community colleges in the state.
Okay, I didn't hear that part, well, anyway, so that's one. The other on TV the other night, there was uh, and we're talking about legislation that was regarding uh fiery. Specifically retarded that has PFAS in it.
Yes.
So is that, is that all part of what we're talking about here on thirty fifty two?
Yeah, well, it is not on um the thirty fifty two, so we've got, yeah, I don't, we've got a lot of bills. And the one that I actually had in my notes to add to this was HCR two, that's the House Convert Resolution that is encouraging the state. Um, their commitment to finding like vital solutions and alternatives, uh, you know. Related to the problem of cancer causing chemicals in firefighting care. Um, and that one's being uh brought forward by Representative Deisha Graber and so. That's, that bill seems to be moving now, but again, it's, it's, right now, there's no viable alternatives that are safe for firefighters. So as much as I think they'd love to advance something to require phase out of that gear, there's, you know, the, the public safety or the safety of those. Firefighters is the, the challenge there. Um, the firefighting foam phase out bill, that one is Senator Solman um has brought that forward. That one required phase out of same disposal of what's known as a triple F firefighting foam. Has been phased out at other airports, C-TAC no longer uses it, so there are viable alternatives. It's the phones that are used for really high temperature like jet fuel fires. Uh, but it's also used a lot of training for firefighters as well. So we're aware that there are some areas that have contamination from operations, military bases also being impacted by that. So that bill, I expect we'll have a hearing this session, it's particular to that firefighting foam. And obviously the biosolid study bill, House Bill thirty fifty two is just there to make me nervous. It's just a placeholder of all relating to PFAS, so. Um, and then House Bill thirty seventeen is phasing out PFAS and menstrual products. And then the Oregon Environmental Council, I have an update on this, they have a broader product phase out bill that is going to be. House Bill thirty five twelve, it just was printed this week. And it would phase out a variety of products, including the firefighting foam, artificial turp, cleaning products, carpets, rugs, cookware, cosmetics. Dental floss, fabric treatments, packaging, almost a criminal products, menstrual products, refrigerators, textile articles, and ski wax.
I sure hope some of the other states have found these, if we do, because otherwise we're not going to have some of these things to buy.
Uh, you know, actually, I will say that a lot of those are on a list from um a, a certain kind of phase out organization. Um, and they have been phased out in other states, so I don't think there's any item that I saw on there that hasn't been phased out somewhere. Um, but you have.
Did you define for me uh both in HB thirty seventeen and the, the last bullet, what does phase out mean?
I'm just setting a date that says that by this.
More sale of.
No more PFAS in the. So it means that, so that the, the manufacturers.
They have PFAS in them, is that what you're saying?
I am saying that it's true.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Unfortunately, yes. I don't, not probably not all, but yeah, good.
I'm sorry, Pam, I didn't hear what she said, what she said, I'm sorry, but yes.
I didn't realize that HB thirty seventeen was phasing out menstrual products that include PFAS.
Oh.
I didn't, I didn't understand that definition.
Okay.
Because it didn't seem likely that all menstrual products would be phased out.
That was until she heard the phase out PFAS.
Yeah, I see, I could see.
Same on the firefighter, too, there's got to be alternatives or this is not entirely.
Yeah, and it, it's, it's, it's an interesting conversation in that sense too, because we know from a lot of the research that we've done and we presented to. The House Egg Land and Natural Resource and Water Committee in September, an informational hearing. About the work that our staff has done to try and understand the signature PFAS within our system. And we've done a lot of really good work in pre-treatment programs and we can measure and see the reduction that it, that happens when we're working with industries. But the domestic source, that one's really tricky and we really can't, there's not much we can do. Uh, to try and reduce down that signature, the domestic sources that come into the system. You know, and the other piece, I know Elizabeth makes always a good point, that humans have interacted with PFAS. Before it ever gets to access pass receivers, that human health effect has already happened. Um, so it's really challenging, so that is it for the state legislative, so I appreciate your conversation. Yeah, thanks, you have something, or is there one more?
Yeah, you touched on some of these, but it's.
These, I just don't, I just want to talk about, no, uh, I do love talking about housing. We're, again, we're tracking bills in this housing production space. Uh, the governor will have a middle housing bill, that's House Bill twenty one thirty eight that I mentioned earlier, that has that SDC model language potential in there. Um, what we're looking at again is similar to what happened during the twenty twenty four session. Um, is language that uh in, in this case uses the term design and citing standards. And it says that certain design and citing standards cannot reduce the density of housing that is being built. Um, stormwater facilities, we want to make sure it's clear that stormwater facilities are not seen as designed and citing standards. They're part of the permit implementation for us, but yes, to stormwater potentially reduce down the density. Um, when you're trying to build more houses on, on that piece of land, yeah, it absolutely could, so we just need that. We need to make sure it's clear because I think frequently developers will see something and then they go, wait, why do I have to do this? It's reducing density and there's this confusion added, so we're working with the governor's office on that piece. Um, there's also concern about easement access that we're working through. Um, we need to make sure that we can access, that we've got easements to access utilities as we need to fix them. So in terms of when you're talking about density, we've got to preserve that ability. We've got situations where we've had houses built over sewer lines and that's not great in the future. And so we want to make sure that those things are addressed, so.
How do you say that um development has to code?
Can you read?
Well. Development of homes has to go through home inspections, right?
Mm-hmm.
And how is it that the permits allow the houses to be permitted to be built over? These.
It's a great one, so we don't.
So, yeah, it's like, it's. It, it's sort of an interesting set of rules, so the homes are inspected from the uniformed, polling, building perspectives.
Uh, I'm upstream from that.
Correct, so it doesn't deal, so when they do the home inspection and the plan review, it doesn't deal with the fact. Of how the house is placed over infrastructure. But today, Clean Water Services has designed standards along with cities that these sewer lines from the streets. We're dealing with a past certain consult versus a current services.
I think that's.
New legislation, though.
Well, I was going to say, when in this new legislation, though, as we are talking about these new requirements, regulations, we need to make sure we preserve our ability to avoid that situation.
Well, no, I'm, I'm trying to point out that we need to be clear on what work is being done to. Uh, make up for mistakes of the past or poor implementation of the past versus the regulations that we have today and the practices we have today.
I think they're worried that some new legislation could force the ability to do that again, that's what they're worried about. As a not obstructing the construction of more dense housing.
And I don't see. I think we need to, instead of doing this on our own, we need to be also making sure that. The Oregon League of Cities and our city partners are very clear on. How some of proposed legislation is going to cause problems. Uh, because it's, it, their staff reviews currently are supposed to be looking out for this stuff.
Yeah, and that's.
It's not just all on us.
No, no, it should not be, so yeah, and they've got a new, like Oregon Cities, a new housing plan to use, obvious. So we've spent some time um trying to get to know her better and sharing a bit about how we work, because it's, it is different. Um, so the House Bill twenty one sixty.
This, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the uniqueness of CWS.
I think in the sense that when we in Oregon Cities is talking to cities and all these things are under one roof. Uh, that they, that things don't get flighted. Sometimes that is, you know, the way that we function where we're working with city partners. So I think that that's a piece where I've seen a number of instances where. Cities feel okay about way, the way things are progressing, but in terms of how it is that we would interact with a city. Um, in terms of land use, that development, the permitting, of making sure that that is, that that lens is applied as well. And we're, I know. Um, House Bill twenty one sixty eight, septic loan program, that is moving forward, that's a bill that we are supportive of and provides funding to. Uh, repair, replace, to having septic systems or to connect them to public sewer. Uh, the funding was going to be running out, so this will continue that funding into the future. And, and then there's of course, I know that your county PR team has mentioned this, there's a whole lot of place water bills around housing right now. And, and then there's of course, I know that your county here, Tina, has mentioned this, there's a whole lot of place water builds around housing right now. So we are just trying to figure out what's gonna surface in that space. Um, and knowing that a lot of things are gonna be happening yet, and then that's which um next up bills. So that does wrap.
So I can do a time check. We're at ten thirty three. Do folks need a, a five-minute bio break before we switch into federal or do we wanna continue?
I'd say we've been holding them up, hold them, let's say.
Yeah, keep going. All right.
I gotta go, David.
All right.
We're moving forward. Okay, good. Um, well, good morning, every, everyone. Um. Chair Harrington, good, good to hear your voice, commissioners. Um.
Oh, yeah, you can't exactly see us.
I, I know. I just, I see you waving back there. It is tiny. It's tiny. I do see. Anyway, it's good, good seeing everybody. Um, I, I'm just for quick introduction, I'm Petey Vich. Uh, with the firm Van Scoick Associates. Um, our, our firm um has been representing Clean Water Services and, and also the county for about twenty years, almost twenty years. And so I've been uh, I've been with the Van Scoick the whole time uh with Clean Water Services and, but, and came on as the lead in twenty, twenty sixteen. Um, so, um, so it's good, it's good to um see everyone and we're, you know, we're honored to, to rep, represent you guys back here in, in DC. Um, so, well, with these first three slides, it's not gonna be, kind of, not gonna hit the breaking news here right away and, and, you know, I, I know this is um, starting with this brief overview of, of, of things that, you know, might be already widely known. Uh, but I think it level sets things and gives greater context as we move forward with the, with the slide. So this is just a brief overview of the current balance of, of power in Congress and and just briefly highlights some information of interest about Washington counties and Clean Water Services, or um, the, the Oregon Congressional delegation. And, and so, you know, again, I know you're, you're very aware of the fact that the November election um shifted the balance of power in Washington in favor of Republicans. Um, you know, as the GOP now is the governing majority in, in both um chambers of Congress and, and the White House. Uh, while this, of course, you know, was the most ideal electoral outcome for Republicans, uh, it's important to uh underscore the extremely, uh, in fact, historically uh narrow margin maintained by the uh, by the GOP and, and particularly in the House of Representatives. And so compounding that situation in the House uh for, for the Republicans over these next few months, the, the House majority will be about as thin uh as it can be due to a couple of uh House um Republican members that have, that have or will soon be heading for high-profile positions in the um, in President Trump's administration. Um, so you, you see the numbers there and how close that is. So, and again, I know, I know this dynamic has been widely reported. But it's, it's, it's gonna make for an extremely interesting two years, especially as the House and Senate Republicans attempt to, to come together uh and advance their uh major legislative policy centerpieces. You know, in the bottom part of the slide, you'll see the names of Clean Water Services Congressional delegation members. Um, no changes, as we all know, from the last Congress to the current one. Um, in fact, neither Senators Wyden or, or Merkley were up for reelection even this past election. You know, as, as, as we know, um, you know, none of the delegation members serve the current Congress's majority party. That stated, um, they will still be able to wield um influence in a number of ways and with uh certain key bills that, um, especially will require bipartisan support to advance over the next two years. So, you know, in addition to the exceedingly slim majority tightrope in the House that I described, um, in the Senate, uh, what gives the minority party leverage is that uh most legislation requires sixty votes in order to pass. So next slide, please. Um, covering the uh congressional um committees that our Oregon senators serve on, um. Oregon's uh senior senator, Senator Wyden is the ranking member of the very powerful uh Senate Finance Committee. That's the uh Senate's Tax Writing Committee, which also has jurisdiction over uh Medicaid, Medicare and other major uh federal health-related programs. And during what's called the Budget Reconciliation uh Bills that, that the congressional Republicans will be advancing in, in the, in the coming months, Senator Wyden will be the leading voice for Senate Democrats. Um, uh, who, you know, as, as, as a, as a whole conference, we know will be opposing the expected tax cut extension bill and modifications to Medicare and other social service uh health programs. And so while I mentioned earlier that most legislation in the Senate does require sixty votes to pass, budget reconciliation bills are one of those rare types of uh legislation that requires the simple majority. And so we'll, we'll touch upon that a little bit more later. Uh, importantly, uh, for Senator Wyden also is, is he's the second highest ranking member on the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee for the Democrats. Uh, this committee has jurisdiction uh over a number of agencies. Uh, but the one that is of most interest to Clean Water Services is, is the panel's oversight over the Bureau of Reclamation. Uh, as we know, Skoggins Dam and, and Hague Lake are owned by the Bureau of Reclamation and Reclamation administers the Safety of Dams Program, which is endeavoring upon the soon-to-be-constructed um Skoggins Dam retrofit project. And so obviously there'll be uh more detail on Skoggins uh and, and the Safety of Dam effort uh later in the presentation. Uh, as for Senator Merkley, uh, you know, he also serves on a number of powerful committees in the Senate. Uh, the Appropriations Committee uh i- is responsible for all annual funding of the federal government's discretionary programs. Uh, and on that panel, um, he's the ranking member or top Democrat on the Interior uh and Environmental Protection Agency Subcommittee. Uh, and while that doesn't fund the Bureau of Reclamation, uh, this sub, subcommittee funds virtually all other agencies under the Department of Interior, uh, along with all programs and projects uh within the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, additionally, um, Senator Merkley also serves on the Environment and Public Works Committee. This is an authorizing committee which directs policy and establishes or men's programs at the Environmental Protection Agency. So Senator Merkley serves on the, the committees, the two committees that both uh oversee the policy part and then the spending allocations for, for EPA. Uh, and then I'll just uh quickly note that Senator Merkley uh is also the ranking member of the Senate Budget Committee. And so we'll, we'll be sure that we'll be seeing and hearing uh his views um on the Senate Republicans' budget reconciliations bills that we'll be advancing in the first half of this year. Next slide, please. So turning to Clean Water Services, two House Representatives, House members, Representative Bonamici is now in her uh eighth term. The Education and Workforce and Science Space and Technology Committees have been Representative Bonamici's two main committees since first coming to Congress. Um, and on the Education Committee, she's the ranking member or top Democrat uh on the Early Childhood, Elementary and Secondary Education Subcommittee. Uh, Rep, Representative Bonamici is, is a longtime champion of Clean Water Services efforts related to Skoggins Dam. Um, each year she writes to the leaders of the House Appropriations Committee in support of annual funding allocations specific to, to Skoggins Dam to the Bureau of Reclamation's dam safety program. Uh, also, we had talked about earlier, that Tracy brought up, it's about a year, year and a half ago, Representative Bonamici secured almost a million dollars in federal funding for that inflow and infiltration rehab project that Clean Water Services is aiming to construct in, in Forest Grove. And I'll, a little bit later on, I'll touch upon uh, you know, where, how that project for the, for the time being is safe um with, with its funds, but uh, so I'll, 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 I'll get there um in, in a little bit. Just finishing up this slide with Representative Salinas. She was elected to her second term in the House this past November. She represents a portion of Clean Water Services uh in the southwestern portion of the service area. Uh, Salinas serves on the House Agriculture and um and the Science Space and Technology Committee, which is, um, as we know, Senator Bonamici also serves that, on that committee as well. And Clean Water Services had, has had positive interactions with Representative Salinas and her office in the first term. Um, and will be continuing to develop that, and foster that relationship um uh in, in the years to come. Next slide, please. So with the next uh few slides, we're gonna shift over to highlight activity on the executive branch side uh with.
One second, Pete.
Yep.
Um, back on the delegation.
Yes.
Tracy and Elizabeth, do you receive the external communications weekly email with regard to the board? From on Friday? I don't know who sends it to you. I just know that every week there is an email that publishes the board's external meetings for the current week and the next, the following week. We need to fix that. It's been in place for seven years. Uh, it highlights the meetings that your board members go to to interact with these federal delegation folks. So three of us, for example, were at Senator Merkley's elected officials meeting before the town call in Tiger two Sundays ago. Last Monday night, I was at a Congressman Bonamici campaign thank you event where she spoke about the uh openings in Congress and despite there being a, a propensity of Republican voting members in those districts, the uh Democratic Party is nonetheless making a push to try and address the uh, the ratio that Pete, Pete was speaking to. So I think there's some room for improvement with regard to uh your agency being connected with the board. Okay, thank you. Now we're back to agency appointments.
Yes, yeah. And so, yeah, as, as I um mentioning, uh, Chair, the, the, with, so with these next few slides, I'll, I'll um, highlight some activity on the executive branch side. Um, and, you know, as we know, with the new administration, there's new leadership in the, in the cabinet and, and department agencies. Um, just very quickly, we, these are, you know, if, if you're tracking this, you know, we know that, um, Mr. Lee Zeldin, a former congressman from Long Island, New York, is heading up EPA. Um, Doug Burgum, who's a former governor of North Dakota, is the uh new secretary at the Department of Interior, uh, and Chris Wright is leading the Department of Energy. Um, all these nominees were just recently approved by the Senate and um officially started their jobs uh over the last week or two. Um, so we highlight these cabinet posts as, as these are the departments, especially EPA and Department of Interior that oversee the policies and programs that, that can have a direct impact over Clean Water Services operations. Um, you know, as we, you, just, just, just as a refresher, EPO, EPA oversees implementation and, and regulatory authority uh tied to the Clean Water Act. Um, you know, important activities and areas addressed by EPA include, you know, federal permitting regulations such as those related to NPDS permits, um, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Regulation of PFAS substances, biosolids, as well as water grant programs of, of, of interest. Uh, Interior, as I mentioned, is where the Bureau of Reclamation is housed, as well as US Fish and Wildlife and uh which funds and operates the Wapato Lake National Wildlife Refuge. Yeah, and, and we, you know, as we see on this slide, we, we, we put in at the bottom, um, Ms. Lori Chavez de Reimer, not because Clean Water Services deals with issues overseen by the Department of Labor, but we wanted to put a spotlight on her because she's an Oregonian who will be leading up a, a key cabinet post um in the new administration. Her nomination hearing is scheduled to occur next week, so she's um still awaiting Senate action before she officially begins her new job. Next slide, please.
On uh that appointment, why does CWS care or have a connection with the work of the Labor Secretary? The very basic question, but I don't know why it's significant at all for Oregon uh that she has that appointment.
You know what? It, I, as I kind of underscored, it is not tied to Clean Water Services and been talking to Tracy and Elizabeth as, as we put this together, um, I think just collectively said, we'll just, we'll put her name in there, just, we, we know that she's, she's the only Oregonian.
When it, when it was put together, except, but yeah, no, it's.
No, I mean, I appreciate that you've made sure we're informed, but I was just wrestling in my mind like, okay, am I missing something?
You are not, Chair. Uh.
Thank you. I really needed that to be bailed into my brain. Thank you.
You never know.
Yeah.
Who you can reach out and use to convince someone else. And so it's good to have an Oregonian in that position. And certainly maintain that relationship, even though it doesn't directly tie to Clean Water Services.
Well, I think you're speaking to indirect value and I'm speaking to direct value.
You know?
Well, and, and then also just in terms of, you know, agent, sub-agencies actually that are, we zero in on here with this slide. You know, on, these are two sub-cabinet or sub-agency posts which, which over, oversee the offices which Clean Water Services works the most closely with. Uh, and is, you know, most directly impacted by, um, uh, the, their, the federal programs and policies which uh with, that are within their purview. And at the Department of Interior, we see that's, you know, of course, the commissioner of the Bureau of Reclamation, um, presidentially appointed, not nominated uh slot, you know, each if each year, uh, Clean Water Services representatives are either in Washington or sometimes it's a virtual. Uh, we, we do traditionally meet with the, the commissioner of the Bureau of Reclamation and senior leadership at Reclamation to discuss the status progress and other issues related to Skoggins Dam and the Safety of Dams program and, and that project. Um, as of today, uh, the president has yet to, to announce his nominee to be the next commissioner. Uh, but of course, we're watching uh that closely as we expect uh homemade known his selection fairly soon. Um, in the meantime, uh, Mr. David Palumbo, who Clean Water Service, Clean Water Services has engaged with on a number of occasions over the years, uh, is serving as the acting commissioner. Um, yeah, Palumbo has deep, deep experience in Reclamation where he's served as the deputy uh commissioner for operations since twenty fifteen. Uh, the assistant uh administrator for water is an important sub-agency position, is that individual runs uh EPA's Office of Water, uh, which is really the touchpoint office for Clean Water Services at, at the agency, um, like the Reclamation Commissioner position. President Trump has yet to announce his nominee for assistant secret, assistant administrator for water at, at EPA. Next slide.
Can we pause one second? So I know, um, when I was back there in DC in May of twenty eighteen and met with BOR Commissioner.
It would have been Brenda Berman probably at that time.
I remembered the Brenda part. It was the last name.
Berman, yes.
I didn't want to just say Brenda.
And that's how people usually refer to it, Brenda, yes.
And I think there was a gentleman there, uh, I don't know if it was Mr. Palumbo or not, uh, but then Pam, you went back for a fly-in. Did you get to meet uh? Then, okay, okay. All right.
Yeah, I think, I think our last meeting was virtual with uh Commissioner Tooten, who was the commissioner for the four years of the uh Biden administration, but we, we did, we did meet with her. Um, but.
Just.
But it wasn't on the phone, yeah.
I'm just really concerned that the presidential nominee is just going to X out the uh, uh dams, safety of dams whole category. Do you?
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I will get to that actually, when we, when we talk about the, what, what we saw initially happen a week ago with the freeze. There were two thousand six hundred programs that were, were part of that freeze and we didn't see, there were a number of reclamation programs that were, but we didn't see that one as, that was one of the few that I, I don't think was gonna, was under that freeze, but.
Okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't, but doesn't mean, doesn't mean we shouldn't be keep watching, watching that, but yeah. But it's a good, it's a really good point, Chair. Um, so next, next slide, please. Okay, so, yeah, so here we're, we'll get into some of those issues. You know, as on here, we're gonna talk about the Presidential Administration Directive Policies and executive orders obviously are kind of front and center in that regard. And as of yesterday, President Trump has signed 54 executive orders. It's the most in a president's first hundred days since President Harry Truman. Then, you know, as we know, the administrations, EOs, impact a number of areas and issues, but you know, as Clean Water Services federal priorities and interests are scoped within the water and natural resources, environmental infrastructure sectors, I'm just gonna touch upon just, just a few.
So on President Truman, what was, could you remind us all what the historic event was such that Truman also signed a historic number of executive orders in his first hundred days?
Yes, his, I knew it was 57. I saw that was 54 and his was 57. Obviously, we were coming off of the war. So.
War II, you mean?
World War II. So, but you, you know, Chair, you probably have a better sense of what all of that, that activity was. My sense is it's surrounded.
Darn, because he's outing me that I'm old to the end.
No, no, no. Just that you're probably a better student of history than I am.
Oh, I am a terrible student of history. I really appreciate the mention of, you know, how does it relate to historic trends with presidents? But when I hear these broadcasts on the radio, on TV, like, oh, we haven't seen this many since Harry Truman. And I'm like, yeah, and it was towards the recovery of a major world war.
Right.
Very different. So it's like misuse of historic perspective. So I, I frankly wasn't sure I got it right. So thank you for your grace in, in reminding us of that history, but I think we need to be careful or mindful. I don't, I didn't mean to say careful. I think we need to be mindful and help every one of us who doesn't necessarily remember that history with regard to these contexts. That's all.
Absolutely. No, it's a really good point. You bet. Well, and so it's not on this slide and I know not, you know, just to put out there, it's not directly related to to Clean Water Services with Oregon. I, you know, and just in terms of Trump EOs, I mean, they're, you know, and if you, if you look at what he did just specifically targeting, you know, people think about his water EO. You know, that, that was the most direct shot at, you know, Oregon's neighbor in the South California. There was an article headline last week that read, you know, Trump looks to seize control of California water. But, you know, again, I'm not going to go into the details. That's, you know, that his pronouncements are related, not related to, to what we're focused on. However, I will say that it does contain a thread that, that's of interest to Oregon and that's that the president's claim, you know, that, that a recent action of, of his, like last Friday, that he took that resulted in diverting water from, he said, from the Pacific Northwest to California. So I haven't yet been able to, to confirm that there's infrastructure that exists that can channel water from maybe the Columbia River to Southern California, but I don't know, maybe I still need to keep inquiring on that one, but.
It did make me wonder if there are all kinds of dams on the Willamette River that primarily, as I understand it through talking to folks, which is to say it's all through friends and none of it's professional. That, you know, there's, the reason why we have those dams is more for flood control. And yes, we get energy generation out of them, but you know, there are all the dams along the Columbia River, you know, Canada, all the way through to the ocean that provides for a lot of energy, but also some flood control. And so I'm wondering if this pretends that, well, he's either gonna want further takeover of that or dismantle and privatize that. Which, so anyway, that's.
We're watching it closely. Yeah, because we don't really know, you know.
We can see. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, 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 as you, we talked about every day, there's, there's, there's a new development, so. I don't know, may, maybe we'll be funneling water from Greenland over, I don't, I don't know, but.
I'm not.
Bad, bad joke, okay. But, and just on this, on the executive order threads, there, there, the executive order that was issued by President Trump titled Unleashing American Energy. And then there was a section there terminating the Green New Deal. And it references federal infrastructure and climate spending derived from the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022 and the bipartisan infrastructure law of 2021. And then, you know, as we know, acting upon this executive order as well as six others, that was the firestorm that erupted last week after OMB issued that sweeping array in order to temporarily pause any action and disbursement of funds from a a vast array of federal grants, loans and other federal assistance. The stated purpose of, of the action was to identify and review all federal funding to ensure it was consistent with the president's policies and requirements. The funding tied to the generically identified Green New Deal, DEI initiatives, other buckets that he outlined and his administration outlined were, were ones that were were going to be flagged. So as I mentioned, it was over 2,600 programs that were identified for that temporary freeze. And then this past Monday, a court ordered OMB, directed OMB to restart the disbursement of federal funding. And, and there are indications from some agencies that they are abiding with this judicial order. I guess it's unclear if all executive branch departments have turned back on the, the flow of federal dollars. And, you know, again, so fortunately for Clean Water Services, the utility does not have any direct federal funding that's in the queue that's in danger, or at least danger of being held up with this particular action as far as we know. And as I mentioned, we also believe Reclamation Safety of Dams Program was one of the small number of federal programs that escaped at least this temporary freeze. And, you know, we went, mentioned earlier, the, the INI earmark project that Rep. Bonamici secured for Clean Water Services. Because the way that particular earmark program works, the, the funding does not expire. And I know that Clean Water Services is looking at state dollars and other funding and so we have it, it's still safe there. We haven't yet you know, implemented or tried to obligate those funds yet, but as, as far as we know, that, that there's, we should be in good shape, but I'm gonna, but you know, we have to just keep monitoring things because everything's developing in, you know, in real time and there's, and we're gonna be watching it closely and keep, keep, keep you all informed. And, you know, really, I guess the larger issue at play is a concern in some corners that this action may be a first step in the Trump administration's pledge to, it's called impounding or just not spending federal dollars, rescinding federal funding, reprogramming, or transferring federal funding to, to the maximum extent possible. And, you know, whether it's gonna legal or extralegal is gonna probably be up to courts to, to decide because there will probably be challenges if, if this activity, you know, continues through the administration. And of course, there's a number of Congress who are very concerned with what is taking place in the precedent. So, and then intertwined in, in some of these actions is the Department of Government Efficiency, the DOGE, which is formerly organized as the United States DOGE Service, a part of the White House and Elon Musk is considered a special government employee at the time, for the time being, anyway. You know, it seemed that the DOGE's original mission was to do a thorough review to evaluate and suggest options to downsize and save the federal government money. Of course, we, with recent reports have stated that Musk and, and others that he's deputized as part of the DOGE have been perusing internal government data and finance systems. So rather than just, you know, reviews leading to say like a draft comprehensive report or recommended approaches for for savings or cutting the workforce, you know, we're seeing and some saying that Musk might, is actively taking part in implementing federal, for instance, a federal employee and, and federal programmatic downsizing edicts and, and activity. So how this will continue to play out is uncertain. But in these early days of the new administration, the DOGE is causing a tangible stir in, in Washington. So next, next slide, please.
Can I ask for a second here?
Sure.
Two things. On the county side, we've been doing work to make sure that we are engaging so on a community engagement front, that we are improving our community engagement to expand and make sure we are overcoming historically disadvantaged communities. Then additionally, on our workforce diversity, you know, we are, we recognize we are a diverse community and our workforce needs to continue to advance and reflect the diversity of our population. So as a county government, we're not stepping back from our diversity and equity work. The, on the grants and finances front, the county operations is doing a full assessment of where we have a reliance upon federal grants, so our records are in order because we don't have organized and up-to-date records management systems in the county yet. That's part of what we funded through the ERP and so forth. But I'm wondering, has, has CWS taken stock and do you have the systems in place to know where you have a reliance on active federal grants or not?
Yeah, Kathy and I talked about that recently and kind of the initial review assessment was that there was not a lot that caused a significant amount of heartburn at this time. I don't know if you want to expand on that Kathy, it's more of the bonds, I think, where yeah, it wasn't significant.
Yeah, most of the rest we receive are pass-through. See. And.
So those are subject to pullback too, so that's no comfort.
Well, one was, what is the septic connection? The, that was, I believe, an ARPA backed initiative for $2 million. So there, there's, there are also, there's smaller dollars. We have the FEB one we just talked about for the Forest Row INI. And there was a more recent one that I'm not as familiar with, which we just were notified of, and related to pizza, and that one I'm less familiar with.
It's a little.
I didn't hear you, Kat. So there's one that we recently were notified of that we were awarded. Ellie's working with it and it's something related to, is it a FEMA backed book? And, you know, unless it could retire or, or emergency management related, and that one I'm not as familiar with, a smaller dollar. So for the minimum, we also have a Build America bond. It's been up there for quite a while, that we get sequestration dollars taken out of. So it's a sub-certificate for bonds we issued to take the advantage of the higher tax ability, or the government promised to provide interest relief. So it's.
So that's implemented.
And that's already in place, but we, we weren't sure, you know, that is always threatened. Every budget season, that money source is threatened as to whether they will take it off. They've already reduced the amount they would, they, they give.
But that would be for new issues.
No, no, it's, it's a bond that's outstanding right now. Build America bonds, a hundred million we issued a while back. And not long after we started that process, they already started reducing down the amount of interest we would receive back in, in rebates. So that is one we've always been, been looking at. We don't have the ability to advance refunding. We have to make the holders of bonds whole if we catch them out. Our financial advisor will say that every year and has determined at this point, we do have the ability to get out of that. We wouldn't really have any cost savings, but it would get us out of this constant cycle of, are we using that revenue source?
So I if we were a private utility board of directors, I would think we would be criticized as a board for not having something that documents the initial review. As you say, currently have. So that's one reason why I'm asking. We're getting a verbal update. That's all fine and good. But if there's ever either a financial audit or a program audit, I think, you know, demonstrating, are we an effective board of directors? I don't have anything to fall back on.
I think the issue is what is our vulnerability? And that's the request that I'd be making as a board member. And I think that the approach could, you could look to what the county's doing right now and do something similar. That would help me feel more confident, especially around our, also our programs that are DEI labeled.
Thank you.
You ready to send your page?
Oh, sorry about that. Yes. So and then with this slide, just a little bit of a continuation of this discussion as with all new administrations, the initial trance of, tranche of executive orders typically includes a a, a number of executive orders that are rescinded from previous administrations. So President Trump was no different in, in, in that activity. Would we talk about this slide being done, you know, maybe a couple of weeks ago, that, that number 78, it's now 96. So he has, he has revoked, it's 96 previous or past executive orders and actions. The overwhelming majority of those 96 are from the Biden administration. But there's one or two from the Obama administration, one from the Clinton administration, one from the Carter administration, and one from, goes back to the Johnson administration. So so, so that's that's been a pretty broad scope of in terms of his revoking past EOs. The last point I'll make is related to you know, the, on the tariff side and the threat of tariffs and, and, and the pursuit of those. You know, it's hard to predict how Trump's tariff policy will play out. I, I would say that it's probably safe to predict and we can expect more, you know, brinksmanship, you know, because just recently he had threatened 25% tariffs on Canadian and Mexican products and at the last minute that, that was pulled. However, I think, starting, it was on Monday, I believe, a 10% tariff on all goods coming from China went into effect. So these, you know, all are new developments. I haven't discussed with Elizabeth or Tracy or folks from Clean Water Services, you know, if or how, you know, that this may impact their operations or existing products. I know there's some water agencies that need to purchase specialized equipment or materials from certain countries and so, you know, where if we ever need to look at waivers or product category exemptions, that's something that I know that a lot of people are looking at as well. So, next slide, please. So at, at the congressional level, what's going to be the main focus of the House and Senate over the next several months will be one or it's not decided, it's either one or two major, high-profile legislative packages, which will wrap together an extension of President Trump's 2017 tax cut package. Wrap together an extension of President Trump's twenty seventeen tax cut package. Along with other major changes to the tax code. It will include a broad domestic energy production incentive package. As well as border security funding. And then there'll be several provisions that, you know, will be in there to actually pay for. Or try to offset the cost to the Treasury that's going to be stemming from those major agenda items I just mentioned. You know, and as part of that, the Republican-sponsored congressional budget bill or bills. May aim to. Rescind climate-related spending from the Inflation Reduction Act. Such as the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund and other clean energy tax incentives. And we probably are basically reductions and there are changes to Medicaid and other domestic government programs. So we're going to be watching that. Closely to see if any important federal water programs will potentially be instarled into that effort. I know that as it relates to the tax portion of the reconciliation bill. A concern for public entities like Clean Water Services is the potential. You know, and the county is the potential that Congress will attempt to include a provision to reduce or eliminate. The tax exempt status of municipal bonds. And so I know Christina is going to mention this in more detail. During her presentation, but we'll be watching, watching that closely as the, as the tax. As the tax bill moves, moves forward. Next slide, please. The main point with this slide is just to again reiterate that this, this bill or bills will be part of a legislative vehicle. It's called a budget reconciliation measure. And as I said, this, these are, this is the rare exception piece of legislation that only requires a simple majority. In the Senate, and so it can't be filibustered. So these bills will be the marquee centerpieces of the White House and GOP-led Congress. And as such, these measures are not expected to receive any support from congressional Democrats. As it relates to this legislative undertaking, everyone is keeping an eye on, on, on the House. Due to the exceedingly narrow GOP majority in that chamber. As it gets down to the nitty-gritty of the process over the coming months, I'm sure we could expect to see that President Trump will be getting extremely involved and. Perhaps needing to do some major arm twisting, but stay, stay tuned. It's going to be one to watch over the next few months. Next slide, please. So addition to the budget reconciliation measures, Congress still needs to come to resolution on its FY twenty-five annual appropriations bills. These pieces of legislation fund all federal government activities, programs and agencies, except for those. Mandatory programs like Social Security and Medicare. And while these spending bills technically should have been completed by October one of last year. Which is the date that marks the beginning of the new fiscal year. Congress typically clears them shortly before the December holiday period. That wasn't the case this year and now. They punted it into this year with a new current deadline that Congress placed on itself to wrap them up by, of March fourteenth. So, you know, a successful appropriations end game package here will need to be a bipartisan effort. To finding an overall budget level that all sides can agree on. But that's, that's been particularly challenging. And so the clock is ticking to March fourteenth. And but as of today, the path to how that gets resolved is unclear. We know that there's. Six million dollars for pre-construction activities to advance Skoggins dams, the Skoggins Dam Safety of Dams Program. Initiative in wrapped part of the Energy and Water Appropriations Bill. So, you know, we, we hope not to hear talks about a government shutdown in the coming weeks, but. As I said, as of today, there's no agreed-upon path. Also, in the near term, Congress will need to enact a. What will be a very highly, high price tag disaster assistance bill. To address the damages caused by the recent Southern California wildfires. There has been discussion by some Republicans in Congress about putting conditions on that funding. So what if any extraneous conditions or measures get tacked onto this disaster package is also going to be a closely watched affair. You know, in the next month or two. Lastly, and later this spring, Congress will need to quickly pivot to the FY twenty-six appropriations process. So, you know, before this process can officially begin, the new administration. Will have to release its FY twenty-six, twenty twenty-six budget proposal to Congress. A timeline of when that will occur has not yet been telegraphed. It's possible the issuance of President Trump's first budget proposal may not come until May of this year, just looking at when. He put out his first budget in his first term and when. When President Biden put out his budget in, in, in this first term in twenty twenty-one, it was in, in mid to late May. So. Representative Bonamici's office has already reached out to us as the Congresswoman wants to. Again, be supportive of adequate funding in the twenty-six budget. Specifically for the Skoggins Dam Safety Enhancement Project. Next slide, please. I know that I've been talking about.
I think if I might add, given the, given the jurisdiction that Representative Salinas has. I think we need to make sure that. Representative Salinas sees how. Skoggins water from Haguay pertains to. The economic circumstances of residents in her district as well.
That's a, that's a great point. Chair Harrington, we will be asking their office to, to, to weigh in as, as, as on that. And in support of that as well. So we, it was just a note that we actually had a proactive communication. And, but we, we will be. Putting that together. One of the challenges is that the way it works for the. To understand what the actual administration's request is for twenty, for each fiscal year. And so for twenty twenty-six. We don't really, we don't get to see that and Bureau of Reclamation will tell us that until the president's budget comes out. And so we usually align. Our request with what reclamation puts forward in their budget. And so and then that, that informs how we. Then, you know, discuss our support asked to the congressional delegation. So, but. Yeah, and so in, with this slide. As I've been, you know, I know we've been talking about, you know, annual appropriations, federal funding grant loan programs. That are important to the water and wastewater community, which, which can access these programs and, and. Which are typically infrastructure-related programs. And with this slide, it doesn't reflect a comprehensive list of. Federal water sector grant and loan programs. These are some key ones. You know, again, I'm being a broken record here, but at this time, Clean Water Services. Because of its focus on Skoggins Dam is really, is really zeroed in on the Bureau of Reclamation Safety of Dams Program. The SOD program, it's, it's appropriated. In recent years, the annual appropriations is about two hundred and ten million dollars per year. And, and so with, within that annual programmatic allocation over the years. Skoggins has received thirty-seven million dollars to date for pre-construction activities. And then, you know, in, in addition, the bipartisan infrastructure law of twenty twenty-one. allocated a one-time add-on appropriations for, for the Safety of Dams Program in an amount of five hundred million dollars. My understanding is that less than half of those funds have been allocated. And so, but we know directly in front of reclamation at this time. Is, is a one-point-three-billion-dollar seismic retrofit project located in the Central Valley of California. Called BF CISC that's expected to start construction sometime in twenty twenty-six. You know, in a later slide, I know Tracy will provide an update and on the status and current timeline of the Skoggins project. But a key pillar of Clean Water Services federal program is that continued advocacy for robust funding. For reclamation Safety of Dams Program. So current construction projects can, can move to completion and Skoggins can. You know, be next in line without an interruption in schedule. So, you know, we're going to want to make sure those bipartisan infrastructure dollars. For the SOD program are protected and the annual appropriations budget. For the Safety of Dams Program continues to remain at a strong level. And, yeah, I know that. With each year, we continue to work with our partners at the state and the national level, including the. Kristina, the National Association of Clean Water Agencies to advocate for adequate, adequate annual funding for. Important programs like the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And I know that Christina will talk. About some of the recent annual funding challenges related to the Clean Water SRF. And I know too that she'll be covering. Key EPA regulations related to PFAS and, and other things and, and how what that means from a. Regulatory perspective with the new administration and the new Congress. But, so with that, for, for the time being, I know, I think I come back later for, for another slide or two, but that. That concludes my, my presentation for the time being. So, thank you. You bet.
So, part of what I'm hearing about through the news media is this idea of. You know, downsizing government, removing regulations. And so I'm wondering what you're actually hearing. Or likely to see through Congress particularly. About reducing regulations. My bottom line question is, is if or how. CWS may be threatened by deregulation or dismantling work. Particularly that, given that we have reliance upon the watershed permit. Our wastewater recovery permits and the Clean Water Act. Is it still just, we wait and see or? Do we, are we reliant upon ensuring that certain regulations stay in place so that. That industries as well as the, the residents. Performance continues.
It's a great, it's a great question and I don't want to steal too much of Christina's thunder moving, moving forward on this because I know she's hitting some of this, but. You know, we, you know, the, the administration, the president has telegraphed. A number of, of regulations, you know, primarily that were promulgated during the Biden administration. Through with the EPA and energy and other key agencies that. He will be, and his administration cabinet will be moving forward to. To redo, to, to rework those regulations. That takes, it's a process that takes time. And so. You know, so we are watching those closely. Some of those core regulations were, were, you know, it's, some of it is, is. A wait and see. And I know some of it is just getting this, some, these folks in the administration fully on board. And, and, and they're going to get, get to work on that. But, yeah, I mean, and, 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 and. We know some of those regulations that they're going to target right out of the gate. But there's, 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 there's others that could be surprises. I know that. You know, and, you know, so there's, there's, there's those that you had mentioned, Chair, that. You know, could be concerning from, from a deregulatory perspective. You know, others, you know, that could be modified that. You know, we, depending on how they're done, maybe, maybe that would be supportive. So, so when it comes to the regulatory side, it can be. Can be a mixed, a mixed, a mixed bag on that, but I know it's pretty generic and.
Well, the situation I want to avoid is that our congressional delegation turns to the agency and says. Okay, should we be weighing in here? Will this have a detrimental impact? And, oh yeah, I need the answer by the end of the day tomorrow. And the situation I'm trying to avoid is that this agency says, oh, well, we need time to figure that out. So, I don't know what I'll have to figure out, but.
Yeah, and you know, there's, we will start to hear. Those rumblings that they will come out, we will hear about them. And then, of course, the regulatory process does take. Time. I mean, there is, there's a notice and comment period, and I know that even though the Trump administration is moving at a rapid pace. You know, they are, there is a required proposed rule. Notice and comment that, that, you know, that's the formal way to, to be able to. Way in on that, you know.
Okay, so what you're, what you're trying to reassure me is that. There will still be certain. Time periods in place. It can't all just be achieved through a stroke of the pen. And that I need to take comfort in that. That's a big win. I'll take that. Thank you very much.
The caveat is, is that they could, you know, they, they could. They could ignore the comments. They could, they, you know, if they, if they know where they want to go. You know, they, they could be ignored, but we will, you know, but. You don't really look, you know, you, you have to go and be at the table and you have to come in and. You know, oftentimes, even if they're going in a certain direction, you know, if there are certain areas, sometimes you could. You know, you can influence that, that are really impactful. So, so, yeah, so there, there definitely, there will be. An opportunity to, to do that, but.
And I, I think this might be the perfect transition.
Yeah, I was going to say from Christina's perspective, and you'll notice on her list when she gets her slide, it talks about the.
Okay, well, so this is where you guys need to do a better intro. Because we as board members only know that CWS is a member of NACWA. So, we need, rather than just diving into what the slide says, we really need an introduction to.
Yes, yeah. She's going to share, yeah. Hi Christina, it's great to see you. Thank you for joining.
Thank you for having me. Okay, I will kick it off with an introduction to myself and to NACWA. So my name is Christina Survis and I am the Managing. Director of Government Affairs for the National Association of Clean Water Agencies or NACWA. And as noted, Clean Water Services is a member. And we're actually especially fortunate, I think, right now where we have Diane Tannenbich Dennis as our current president. And so we're really excited to have that leadership within the association. So who is NACWA? We are the trade association based in Washington DC. For, that for, that represents publicly owned wastewater and stormwater management agencies, or what we call clean water. Agencies. And so kind of key in that is we're on kind of the, the wastewater side, not the drinking water side. That's our focus. And as well, we only represent publicly owned utilities, which is the vast majority of the clean water sector around the country. We have about three hundred and sixty and growing public agency members that are all members of NACWA across forty-nine states. And all sizes heavily concentrated, more so in the larger and more urban districts, but then going down to mid-size and smaller utilities as well. Really trying to bring the whole sector together and moving forward. And so in Washington DC, our focus is advocacy. And so we work on federal legislative. Regulatory, legal and communications advocacy. All on behalf of the public clean water sector. And as part of that, you know, we look to work collaboratively with individual utilities and the lobbyists that they have. So folks like Pete. We try and stay in contact and so that we're all sharing information and working most effectively on behalf of our utility members. So unless there's any questions about that, I'll just kind of. Dive into kind of the key issues that we are focused on here. And Pete, I think, gave a really comprehensive overview of everything that's happening in Washington and so much, obviously all changing and we're all hearing about it. In the media. So I'll just be, build on that a little bit with where we're focused right now. The first slot, the first kind of bullet I put up there, something we haven't talked too much about yet, but. Within kind of the context of clean water affordability. It's advancing this low-income household water assistance program or LIWAP. And so you might be familiar with. During the, kind of the, as the pandemic was moving forward back in twenty twenty, you know, there was influx of obviously federal. Investment in different areas with a focus on public health. And as part of that. We were pleased that a new program was created to provide water assistance for low-income households, primarily to. Make sure that folks were not disconnected from their water systems and then to help with the reurges with all of the economic uncertainty that was happening at that time. This was a program that NACWA has tried to establish in Congress for many years and it kind of took that pandemic to get it, to get it going and for. There really to be an elevation of water for, as a central service that it is for public health and safety. an elevation of water for, as a central service that it is for public health and safety. And so that was a one-time program. It went, it was, rolled out over several years. Oregon received, I believe, $14 million through that program, all funneled through utilities to individual household accounts, so really helping with a reurges. And, you know, so, so this was a kind of a successful pilot almost, and what we're working now to do is to establish that as hopefully a permanent program moving forward. And we really see kind of twofold needs that that would be filling. One, you know, making sure that households don't face that water insecurity and that they have some, you know, confidence that there's assistance there. It's really similar to what we've seen for many decades on the energy side, the low income household energy assistance program. And then, too, some confidence for the utilities that, you know, as they're needing to charge the rates that they need to make investments, that there is, you know, sort of a backstop for for those households that cannot pay those rates. And so I'll just say, we're going to continue advocating for that moving forward this Congress as part of this, you know, kind of attention to the water affordability crisis that, that, you know, is really a nationwide kind of growing challenge. I will note that for the, we had that bill advancing as a bipartisan bill last Congress and in the House, one of the the co-leads was Representative Lori Chavez de Rima, which has been, as discussed, you know, she's no longer in Congress, and so we'll be looking for more bipartisan champions this coming year. Infrastructure investment, kind of more broadly, aside from directly focused on on water affordability assistance. Pete discussed really the overall picture of what we're seeing there with the freezes. You know, even aside from the executive orders and all this uncertainty that's kind of started out here the year, we, it was going to be a really tough funding climate. We have the bipartisan infrastructure law influx of water investment ending after fiscal year '26. And so we're potentially looking up, you know, pretty, pretty short order here, a drop off in federal funding on water. And so trying to advocate to not have that be a one-time influx, but to keep those higher spending levels for water infrastructure investment moving forward is an overall huge priority right now. Both, both of the SRFs and the WFI program, the sewer and reuse, the two in stormwater reuse overflow programs, all of those EPA programs are up for reauthorization after FY '26. And so trying to make the case for why we need stronger water infrastructure investment is a huge priority right now. We, there was a little discussion around earmarks as well, and we're not totally sure how that's gonna, you know, what that's going to look like here with the new Congress. But one thing, you know, we're also keeping an eye on is that the way Congress brought back earmarks, they're pulling the funding for those grants from the top line that goes to the state revolving funds. And so that's kind of a concern because it leaves less money than going to the states. And what we're trying to get Congress to do is to have those earmark funds be additive. And so all of those kind of policy issues are swirling in the context of this bigger discussions around cutting federal funding and freezing funding. And so it's just a really kind of challenging and dynamic time. But what we're really just focused on is that, you know, water infrastructure investment is a core federal investment in, you know, American safety and health, and so, and and water affordability is a growing concern. And so we need to see those numbers continue. I'll note, almost half of the EPA's annual budget goes towards water infrastructure investment, most of that going through the state revolving funds. So that's just kind of, you know, important to keep in mind as we're talking about and hearing about all of this attention to cutting EPA's budget. Well, it's really hard to do that if you don't look at the water infrastructure investment programs, and so that's just sort of the reality of what we're, we're up against right, right now, unfortunately. Pete talked a little bit about the municipal bonds and kind of the potential concerns with that as the, you know, congressional leadership tries to advance a budget reconciliation package that has, you know, significant tax cuts, and then there's, you need to have a way kind of to pay for that. And so that brings us to this conversation around municipal bonds and Build America Bonds, we're discussed as well. Unfortunately, those are sometimes looked at as, you know, if we rescinded the tax exemption, it would bring in a lot more revenue, and that would help pay for cuts elsewhere. This came up in the 2017 tax cuts, you know, debate. But the idea of actually removing the tax exemption for municipal bonds never got too much traction. It was seen as kind of a bridge too far. And so we're hopeful that that's how things would shake out with this debate as well. But obviously, things are, you know, even a little bit more uncertain than kind of there's, you know, nothing is sort of sacred in terms of different programs and policies right now. The tax exemption for municipal bonds has been on the books for about 100 years. So you would think that it's pretty secure. But it said, the estimates are that if you eliminated it, you could have a $250 to $350 billion essentially boon to the kind of the federal budgeting that then could be applied essentially to kind of cover tax elsewhere. So I'll just say that this is something we're paying a close attention to, really working across all of the municipal sectors, all the different associations here in DC, working collaboratively to make sure that we're trying to defend taxes at municipal bonds. I heard advanced refunding mentioned earlier. That was kind of the one loss from 2017, where the option to advance refund tax exempt mini-bonds was taken away because it provided a little room in the, for, for tax elsewhere. And so that was a loss. And so we're, we're hopeful that's kind of holding the line and no other changes here in all of this major tax discussion that's happening over the coming, you know, months and throughout the year here.
I just don't under, I don't understand the broader public. How does that actually help? I mean, yes, it creates revenue for the federal government, but a lot of the projects that they've been sort of helping local municipalities accomplish are just going to be more costly, and they're going to be asking for more federal money to support them. Like, I just, I don't understand how that even, like, solves any kind of problem. It seems like it's moving the money around, making things more complicated and expensive.
I, you're absolutely right. Yeah, it's, it's, I, I, I kind of can't believe we're having the the conversation. But, you know, it's the amount of challenges it's going to create, especially if you're in this climate of, right, you're cutting, cutting all of these other programs, you know, something like what, with the SRFs, all of this kind of stuff is under threat. And then you're also cutting, you know, potentially putting at risk these core infrastructure investment programs, and obviously not just water across, you know, the swath of investments, you know, that the public sector makes. It, you know, it, the, the kind of downstream ramifications would be, would be huge. So hopefully, we, we do not come to that. But it is unfortunately something that's really being batted around here.
If I could, if I could weigh in a little bit on that, too. This has been on the plate for back and forth for years and years. Back in my CPA days, that was, it would always come up, and it's considered a benefit of the rich because they're the predominant buyers of municipal funds. And so when you're talking about a $250 billion tax increase, that, there's a lot of money out there that is invested in tax-free bonds. And so that's why it kind of gives a little bit more attention. But you're exactly correct. You got to look at both sides of this issue, and it would significantly impact capital availability for projects that we need and everybody else needs. So it's kind of a two-way, so thank you, Christina, sorry.
Okay, so just a couple of the things I wanted to mention. There was some conversation earlier around bio-salads and PFAS. You know, as a whole, maintaining all of the bio-salads management options, including land application, is a big priority for us this year. Couple, that's something that's kind of working through the regulatory process, but is really a kind of a long-term sort of situation that that EPA is looking at. So EPA recently came out with a draft risk assessment, looking at the potential risks to PFOA and PFOS and bio-salads. That's just a draft, it's out for comment right now. We're not kind of sure what this administration is going to do with that. But regardless, it's then to go actually through the regulatory process. We're looking at about like a five-year potential timeline at best to actually set standards for PFOA and PFOS in bio-salads, which is just to sort of say, you know, not, not a ton of change rate in the, in the near term with regards to that with the new administration. The, the, you know, it's kind of an interesting time where, you know, there's, obviously, we have this huge deregulatory kind of push happening, kind of at the highest levels of conversation. But as we look at something like PFAS, the actual initial kind of federal PFAS strategic roadmap, trying to address it within all of the environmental statutes, came out actually during the first Trump administration, and then it was advanced in the Biden administration. So we don't really expect kind of a full pullback on all of those efforts, potentially something a little bit actually more targeted. One of the main things that we saw happen over the last year during the Biden administration was a designation of two PFAS as hazardous substances under SURF law, or you might know it as the Superfund Law. And so that was done as a way to help advance remediation at some of the most highly contaminated sites around the country, things like military bases, for example. But there's been a lot of concern from water systems and other kind of passive receivers about making sure that they are not potentially targeted as part of the liability cleanup chain. And so as part of that, one thing we're working on is legislation, water systems, protecting water systems from PFAS liability, to make sure that there's no way that private entities that might have been responsible for pollution, PFAS contamination, could then look to public utilities to bring them into the liability chain so that you don't have the public paying for the cleanup that many fractures have created. So that's going to be a priority for us, continuing, we built a lot of momentum around that last Congress on a bipartisan basis, and we're going to be working on that again this Congress. Another kind of piece of federal legislation we'll be working on here, you know, part of the EPA's overall strategy on PFAS looked at making sure that we're setting affluent limits and pretreatment standards that utilities can implement for PFAS. That work is slow, and it goes through the regulatory process, and EPA is arguably pretty kind of far behind on that and and kind of playing catch-up. And so there's been legislation that NACWA's been working on collaboratively with some of the environmental NGO community to set timelines around EPA's actions, really just to kind of hold their feet to the fire, to make sure that they're setting some of those standards that then utilities can use to work with upstream industries that might be releasing PFAS to their systems. But overall, one of the main things we also need to make sure that policymakers are understanding is that, you know, as was mentioned earlier, PFAS are coming in from domestic sources. And so a kind of a policy of holding a utility accountable to reach zero levels of PFAS in their affluent or affluent or entering the the water system is not, not feasible because we're going to continue, unfortunately, to have these domestic releases, you know, well into the future, since we've got durable goods like Teflon pans and textiles that are, you know, used for for decades in our homes. And so just trying to make sure that policies around PFAS are implementable and practical and kind of based on risk-based science. I think, I think I can stop there, unless there's any questions. I know we're kind of running up on time.
I have, I have a couple. Back on the very first bullet, it was mentioned the fact that then Congresswoman DeRemez advanced that bill. Well, the underlying conditions still remain the same. We just have a different congressional rep, Janelle Bynum. I have no clue if Bend, for example, or Deschutes County, or Matress is part of NACWA. So could someone speak to how either NACWA or on behalf of CWS, the team is reaching out to our two new reps, congressional representatives, Janelle Bynum and Maxie Dexter?
Yeah, great question. So last week, we sent up a letter, kind of a welcome letter to new members of Congress, introducing NACWA, introducing at a high level of priorities. And then we're working to do follow-up with those to get meetings set with all those offices to, you know, to have further discussion. So we will be reaching out to them and, you know, expressing kind of, kind of what's going on with water affordability and hoping for their support.
Terrific, thank you. And my other question is to my colleagues, and that is, do you have the information you need to be able to address questions on these bullets, particularly the question of what happens if we're not successful in advancing the needs for each of these issues? Because if there's something more that we've got to ask for it or speak to, I mean.
I'd like to start on that. And I think, given this point in time, the answer is, yeah, 90, 95%. But as time progresses, I, I get less confident about what changes have occurred, what, what, what pieces may fall into place. So what I would ask is that we have updates when there are changes, and so that we have some renewing of what's happened. That's, that would be my question.
I mean, I feel like there are so many moving parts that are happening, things are happening so fast. It's, that kind of information will be helpful, but I also feel like, I don't know what, like, every day we, we're in a different environment, I feel like. And so I, I don't know how to be fully prepared when things are changing that fast.
Well, lucky for us, we had stability for our local delegation. I mean, Salinas was new last year, so there was a ramping up there.
Yeah, I would, I agree that our local delegations. I guess I'm thinking of the question more broadly than just that, but maybe that's what you were doing.
I just, now's the time, as we gather as the Board of Directors, we're not going to meet again in a learning day until July.
I think it's also would be very helpful to know when there are moments when either an outreach or a specific advocacy contact would be particularly useful, because that's something I think we all are comfortable with acting on.
And I would add that when we have this water week coming up in April, that no matter who, what directors attend, that the talking points that you always do for us in in preparation for our meetings would be shared with the entire board. And I don't know that we've had that type of policy in the past, but because things are changing so quickly, I know that that would be helpful to me.
Keep us all on the same page.
Anything else? Okay, we can move on. Thank you.
Good question.
And so we can talk through just this really quickly, but then maybe pause and see if we want to take a sudden break before Starings or do a check.
It's in our, our customers are mainly in the urban services, in the urban region. Why do we care so much about the farm bills? The supports are what quality trading program, so that the one with the NRCS and the Conservation Reserve Program. It's important to us that they fund it and continue to fund it.
Yes, that's a conversation we're having with Salinas to connect those dots with her staff. And I was recalling actually the tour that we did, I don't know, a beer and maybe cherry there was a blueberry farm. And we talked about the credit program, the enhanced conservation reserve program, and stacking utility dollars on the federal dollars for that rip area planting. So having agricultural farmers that were planting along the rip area, which is a benefit for us for temperature offsets, and then also a benefit for that farm that's getting those, that that money for less, very much less than productive land. So it's been a really good program, the win-win-win. And so making sure that those things are continued to be reflected. Again, I haven't had a farm build since '28, I think. So we are past due now, we've been on between resolutions. So, so there's the connection, but yeah, that was a great question. It was a really fun tour with that blueberry farm, I would love to do again.
It was a great, pretty day, too.
It was a very great day. Starings, do you, how do you want to, do you want to take a pause or do lunch break? What do you have? I can go quick, whatever, I can do whatever.
Because we canceled our tour due to weather, although now it looks lovely today. We have a little bit of. We have a little bit of um time that we could come back after lunch. If folks want to keep going, we'll just keep going.
Why don't we try to get through this topic? All right, let's do it.
Okay, well, people, we'll keep it fairly brief. But as many of you are aware, we are currently in the design development phase for Skoggins. The anticipated timeline for starting construction is twenty-twenty-nine. Um, for us, one of the big priorities in our advocacy is making sure that that timeline does not continue to get pushed back. So it's frequent check-ins with Bureau of Reclamation, um, working with Pete, working with our federal delegation. Um, to make sure that that timeline remains and that can't fall behind. It's really been encouraging our federal delegation um uh after conversations they've had with us. It started to have quarterly check-ins with Bureau of Reclamation. Which is really great because we can share any questions that we may have um that they will ask. And so it it continues to keep that interest and make sure it's clear that for the delegation, this is a priority project for the region. Um, the project completion is anticipated for twenty thirty-five. Um, so again, that's a timeline that we'll be keeping an eye on. What's really important, I think, to take away from this slide is that. The Bureau of Reclamation will be updating their twenty-twenty economic benefit and payment analysis. That analysis has a shelf life of five years. So we are currently at that time where they need to do an update. And this is the analysis that determines both the value associated with this project. Which is something that has to go over to O and P to demonstrate again, what is the overall value for the project. And then also determines how they're going to divvy up the fifteen percent local cost share for this project. So under the safety of the M's program, it's an eighty-five percent federal, fifteen percent local cost share. The local cost share would be split among the project beneficiaries, which are the Long Valley Irrigation District. Who has about fifty percent of the water behind the dam. The drinking water providers that are using that water have about a quarter of the water. And then Clean Water Services also has their quarter of that water. And so in that twenty-twenty analysis. We saw that the way they approached the Clean Water Services portion. And determining what our value of that water quality water was, um, is that. They included fish and wildlife benefits. Fish and wildlife benefits is a separate project purpose. And one that we do not believe should be assigned solely to Clean Water Services because it goes beyond what we are required to do with our permit. We certainly care about fish and wildlife. But benefits they were looking at are broader, but controlled. Um, and so what happened in that twenty-two analysis, so we saw that Clean Water Services was valued two times that of drinking water. So out of the hundred and twelve million at the time that represent fifteen percent local cost share. We can have about fifty-four million side of Clean Water Services, about thirty million over to drinking water. And the remainder to the irrigation district. The challenge of this conversation is that if we reduce down our share. It pushes us onto our partners, which is really tricky. As you can imagine. So the conversation that we've been having with our, with the project beneficiaries, the local partners. And then with reclamation as well in the last year is to talk about that fish wildlife benefits. To see if we can figure out a way to determine how much the water quality value should be assigned to Clean Water Services. And how much we believe is a broader widespread benefit that should be assigned to the federal. So that is the conversation. It's a really tricky one. We've given them a lot of data, a lot of information. They have new economists that came on the last two years. We had to do a full evaluation. We had one economist come out to our facility and then he asked. How do you get your revenue? So we had to go all the way back to talking about sanitary sewers and toilets. And that's, you know, that's what we are, as a utility. So they are in the process right now. We expect that we may see some initial indication of how they might adjust. That local cost share dynamic um in an April meeting that they've just recently scheduled. That will include all those project beneficiaries. So we continue to have that conversation. We've talked to Senator Wyden's office about the fish piece. They've been really receptive. Um, and again, I think what's important in this is, you know, when that con, we will be expected to pay on our local share. We're talking again, twenty-twenty-nine. So this is sort of a long-term conversation that if the federal government were going to be open to providing some kind of credit back for that fish. Um, that, that that would be in four years from now, not in the current uh political. Uh, you know, environment that we're in. So again, this is kind of the long-term plan around that.
So are they making the, I guess, just, I, I have heard the concept you just described before. When I'm trying to make a little more sense of it as I'm trying to figure out how I might advocate differently. Is, was the analysis and the approach taken? That CWS is the only agency among those that has an actual responsibility for. Sort of the, the water quality in, and therefore that's what, and that, and that's sort of the nexus that. Fish and wildlife benefit or like I did, because I guess the, the organizations, as I'm thinking about this, just like very. Specifically, like the drinking water providers, they don't have a responsibility around. The water quality, right, in the river basin?
Not, not directly in the way that we do for our.
Okay, so is that, is that the nexus of why they're baked? Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not a. It's not an absurd leap, I guess, um, but the irrigation district.
Agricultural water quality, there is definitely water quality component.
For that.
For I, but again, it's not new and indirect as our permit. I think that when we went to Boise uh this past year and sat down with their staff, we actually had kind of this moment with them where they thought. Wait, when you say water quality. You mean water quality as defined by these standards that are in a permit. Or we think water quality, we think about the quality of water within a watershed just as a more holistic. And so it was a really, really good conversation because you could just see that they started to understand like. So lens that we are all looking through is very different. And so again, you know, we provided them a follow-up data. So we're hopeful that they're understanding and seeing, again, the trickiness of this is going to be that.
Who's going to pay for the public benefit that doesn't really directly tie to any of those? I mean, if you're putting a sort of big picture economist lens on it, there's a public good there or a public benefit that. Doesn't directly benefit any of the organizations. So who's paying that part?
That's why they're asking about the federal government shifting that cost, so to speak, over to the federal.
So not change, so. So increasing the, I mean, that would be making the local share even less than fifteen percent?
We would love that credit to maybe happen after the fact so that we're not seeing again where our share is reduced in a way that pushes it right on to.
Well, that's what I.
The same rate pairs, really, again, for the drinking water, you're talking a lot of shared rate pairs. And so it really doesn't benefit a ton for the rate pairs that we just pushed us on the net. So that's why we want to keep it as a credit-based conversation where the federal government would recognize that and say, yes, absolutely. We do think that the flows that we provide do provide great widespread additional benefit. But they're not the obligation of Clean Water Services. Um, and there are a lot of shared benefits within the region.
This is going to be a tough conversation.
Yeah, but so I want to bring this back to. You're, you're all doing a great job. You're clearly empowered to continue working on this where you are. But I want to bring this back to the board. And the level of financial planning that we need to go through with all of you and staff. It sounds to me like worst case, you already have a current worst-case measure. Right? And you're, you're trying to improve on that. So what I sit here today not being able to answer is. If that local cost share is due. Is it going to be a balloon payment? As of twenty-twenty-nine or is it going to be a local cost share that's payable out? Over, I don't know, ten, the first ten years of the construction to completion final period. So that with regard to our overall financial planning, we have incorporated that in.
So yes, we've incorporated that into the financial planning. The repayment hits um when the project is completed. So likely it'll be in the twenty thirty-five.
We don't have to pay anything.
They don't have to pay anything till twenty thirty-five unless some real exchange on us. But we don't, currently today, we do not pay until that point in time. And we have the ability to negotiate a debt service payment. So it could be over twenty years. There is an ask, a potential to extend that to a thirty-year for some of the repayments. So we have to. And we'll show that as part of the compromise.
This, is there any part of GFOA best practices that might require us to figure out? Well, one financial strategy is, I'll be pressed about it, do nothing and leave it to the board that's sitting in these seats in twenty thirty-five. So, or some, does GFOA say that you should have something better? Than that?
It's not a GFOA standard. It's actually the Clean Water Services Practices for Setting Rates Over the Long Term. To keep it um consistent and predictable for rate base. So we can see how we need to expand it to be able to pay for that debt service.
Well, that may be a find-in too, but my question was directed at how our auditors. May be looking for a financial strategy for a big significant project. Okay, great. There is no risk or liability there, so.
Maybe even plan for, so the auditors look at our annual financial expenditures. I think where it comes back to is, is what is Clean Water Services' long-term financial planning?
Well, so. At least a few of us feel pretty darn hurt that Washington County didn't have a CIP. And we've had to invest sixty-eight million dollars to keep our four critical twenty-four-seven. Public safety buildings open. So I'm just trying to gauge, how do we make sure we have things in place? So that you don't end up with a board majority in two years that. Leaves you in the same lurch.
Well, the auditors will eventually look at this as a liability, right?
Right, when it hap- when it occurs in the final period.
Our financial auditor never looked at our building for Washington County.
So for this. So for this board, you're not, we have an unappropriated fund balance. That's the reason. So we can ride the capital expenditures and to be able to build this type of capacity for the future. So I think what we could do is um provide you with a, the, the long-range, our long-range forecast. You can see that. So you're not in the same fiscal position with Clean Water Services, is the answer.
But you're answering your question about the auditors would look at it and probably they would start looking at it in twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Because we're now on the hooks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So at what point did they look at versus footnote it? It never made the difference.
In twenty thirty-five-ish, depending on the schedule.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, I, I think what you're hearing from, and when Catherine said some of us, I think the three of us are right here.
I feel burned as a resident.
Yeah.
Honestly.
And um. You're also hearing a, a real uh desire, uh need, uh focus. I'm not, I'm not encumbering future boards, future staff, whoever it might be, in a similar situation. So I think that what you're seeing is. How do we highlight this? So it's not, it's, it's not under the covers that is, that it's identified. It's, it's very clear to everybody. And I, I think that's, that's really the, the issue here. And, and, you know, I can speak for myself and say, man, uh, it really does bother. Where we sit today in relationship at the camp. In relationship to where I thought we were. So, uh, you know. Just speaking for myself, but, and we, we paid the price in the community for that too. So just. When we look at how we spend our, our dollars, those types of, it goes back to why CWS is a bright spot for us.
Yeah. Thank you. And we want to provide you with that information and the data. So that's why that unappropriated balance is so critically important. So we can ride the dips and falls.
Yeah, so appreciate it. You, if I paraphrase, the worst case, as I use that phrase. On the fifteen percent cost share and the, if I leave the numbers down right, the fifty-four million. On the assignment is already in your plans.
The only issue will be in twenty thirty-five with the actual construction there is.
Oh, yes.
Six hundred and fifty million on project to well over a billion.
Well, there isn't a lot you can do about that right now unless all the second Clean Water Services creates a construction company. That knows how to put together steel and concrete, a whole construction workforce, you know? It's just, that's going to be rolling the dice.
The number will likely be more.
So where Kathy will panic.
There you go.
Yeah, so where Kathy will panic is if the board says, you know, you have a lot of money in unappropriated balance. Don't need any rate increases.
Oh, no.
Well, that's where in our budget documents, we need a clear footnote, if not up in the paragraphs. Actually for a moment, that the unappropriated fund balance is needed. To accommodate the local cost share or the local cost payment. For the Skoggins dam construction. Currently expected to start in twenty twenty-nine through twenty thirty-five.
And our mayor's and city council members need to understand that as well.
Sure, yeah.
Because that money really can't be spent on.
Right.
You need to keep that in the savings account.
And based upon the question that came up about reserves and capital construction last year. You really need to make sure you highlight.
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the conversation.
I think there's just one last slide for each reelection. Or whatever it is.
I, I'm too. I will be excited.
We're gonna need somebody to pull, push Pam and I in our wheelchairs.
I thought it was Stewlock for the yogurt. I hope to be alive in twenty thirty-five.
Oh, please. I mean, I love the. This kind of, this conversation makes us all contemplate our mortality.
So. But I grew up having the advantage of a public librarian who people before me funded. So. You're doing a great job of highlighting that project for us and our responsibility to.
Thank you.
Hey, well, this is the last slide, I believe. Well, there's questions, I think, kind of on the side of the, if the board has questions. But National Water Week from eight through the tenth, um, so coming up. Um, that is put together by uh NACWA, WAF, Water Re- RON RE's Association. But a bunch of the national associations that are applying folks in. Talk about water. We've got a congressional delegation meeting that will be setting up our delegation. Yes.
I just wanted to point out that, that I looked on calendar, the eighteenth tenth is over a time stamp.
It is.
Yes, it is. Yeah, we would fly out on Monday and then come back on Thursday.
So I would like to do that trip simply because it's going to, you know, my public service career is ending in December of twenty-six. So. I think this will be my last trip to DC as an elected official.
We would love for our. Um, we will also set up some meetings with Bureau of Reclamation, ideally, again, I think at all. Seeing if we, we've got kind of things in place at that moment, but people, people will be helping us in the hunt and. Um, as well as some uh meetings with congressional committees. So we're, we're really excited to come out. Um, the other thing to just flag is we are looking to do a Skoggins Dam tour in August. Um, so getting our federal delegation out there.
I'm here, I'm taking my summer vacation. The end of June.
Great, great. Great, great, and yeah, and Congressman Salinas has not been out there, so we've, we've talked with her, we've talked with her staff, but they want to go out there and see it, so.
It is, it is, uh, I'd say a special place to visit.
It's, you were just there yesterday.
I was just out there yesterday, but I've been out there before, but it was, I got a picture with snow in the background.
Oh, that's awesome.
That's not a common sight.
I want to see that picture.
Post that one.
Yeah. So, okay, well, anything to add on this, Elizabeth, or this proceeds, or you have, that's, that's good, okay.
Does the campground offer you an opportunity for signage about the role of.
We've actually had a conversation with Carl.
Oh, cool.
Of her, right, so, yes.
Thanks.
Great, oh, we're moving forward to claw back a million bucks from the THPRD local share.
Yeah.
And signage is gonna be about that price too.
Are you gonna like Washington County? Yeah, but we need to make sure that the bathrooms and the septic are up to one as well as these things. Okay, board, here you are.
Questions? Yes, yeah, so just our questions of whether there's additional information. Um, on the specific priorities that we.
We need to ask for questions to. Thank you Christina and Pete for being patient with my questions. While we're going through the slides and not holding them till the end, we're, this is just bad cleanup, we're making sure.
Yeah, making sure. The board, you know, the board wants to.
So, so, uh, for Pete and Christina, are you hearing other members or clients as kind of worried as we are about what's going on?
What's.
Or what may go on?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, there's, there's comfort in misery, is that the way phrase goes?
Or the unknowns.
It is, okay, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, more, more questions than answers, really, right now, so.
Okay.
Person's not before.
Well. Oh, we, we have to wait for Commissioner Treese to get out of the, the sanitary room.
That was the one that picture is, and I, I was, so if anyone knows what facility is.
It's not one of ours.
That isn't, it's not.
That's not one of ours.
Yeah, I was curious.
Not there, um.
No, no, it's not.
There, there's not enough of a hill for the central city that's on the other side.
I don't know how that picture gets.
Yeah.
Fascination by Kevin.
Oh, that's his fun. It's Kevin's fun, naming this facility.
So Commissioner Treese, did you have anything else?
No, I just, I do want to say thank you, I think that, I, I really appreciate the legislative updates from all three of you. And I, I think that as we look to Water Week and the, the magnitude of issues, I, I heard the chair say she wants to go. I really hope that there is a tremendous amount of coaching ahead of that time and that those of us that don't go benefit from that as well.
Uh, thank you for raising that, it causes me to ask, who of you are going to the NACWA DC in March?
Tracy, Elizabeth.
No, I meant from the board.
That's Water Week.
Oh, from the board, in March, it's.
You're not going.
I'm not, when is it in March? I'm gone for two weeks.
First part of March, it's before you leave, but it's just before.
Water Week.
Water Week.
Water Week is April eighth to ninth.
We're talking about Naco.
Oh, not NAWA, I thought you said NAWA, you said NAWA.
I meant to say Naco in March. Okay, all right.
I'm missing my efforts on getting through county call.
Okay. Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks very much, we'll see you soon.
When it comes to budget time, you can save money because I still have my yellow and purple front. I guess Kathy.
For Clean Water Services, we're moving on to our next presentation um, around board compensation and travel, this is a follow-up to the November twenty-twenty-fourth presentation. We provided an array of travel opportunities, lots of it from the board of desire to look at, um, what are opportunities for board compensation and make a clearer recommendation around travel. So that's what, what we'll cover today, both our current practice, a discussion of state governing law around special district board member compensation. Uh, look at a couple different options around board compensation, a draft travel, most travel schedule. Um, and then just the, the note that we discussed at the beginning of this in November. So this slide, uh, is a snapshot of our current practice. The Clean Water Services currently pays Washington Counties for time the board and staff that we dedicate to Clean Water Services. Uh, this is a snapshot of the invoice for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It reflects about five percent of the base salaries. Um, there's a notation under Board Directors, Director Snyder, because your predecessor was half-time and you work full-time as we're spreading the calendar year of fiscal year. It, it reflects five percent of your predecessor's salary, five percent of your salary, so this number will come up in the future. So this is our, what we currently do.
I had a, I had a question about how was that number populated? How do you calculate?
It is an estimate, and I think it's worth further exploration of roughly how much on the Washington County Commissioners spend of their total time, it's actually dedicated as support of the Clean Water Services directors.
There is no thorough analysis done.
Yeah, because I don't think it's, um, equal across the board, right? Like, I think the chair carries the kitchen work versus district-based commissioners, but I saw the five percent, um, but that caught my attention, the five percent, and the fact that I'm, not that I'm questioning the five percent, but how that form or the, or how the equation set up, so let me hand out.
It was not robustly studied.
No, it was not, it was just pick a number out of the air.
So we've been I G A with Washington County that has an item that reimburses Washington County for the level of service they feel they're providing for services. So what we have is the twenty-four, twenty-five bill. The Board of Half-Time, Full-Number, Stack-Time, Administrative Services Time, IT, Audio, Visual. It was just set, that reimbursement was set at five percent.
Pull a number out of the air. It's just a starting point, yeah, so there's been no examination done by anybody, not even the Salary Commission, uh, in terms of, the Salary Commission was only focused on what we do for county business. So, um, I did, well, if, when we have a discussion on it, I can tell you what my analysis is. And I think my edit is, when I did the interview for Salary Commission, I interviewed, and this is on record, I didn't talk about the Clean Water Services, the work we go, it may be in the YouTube video, it is not in the written record.
Yeah, going back through the prior two reports, I was able to only find one footnote that even referenced.
There are only two, it's only existed two, two cycles. But, um, your Commissioner Treese's mention of Clean Water Services is in the written record uh, in the minutes, as well as the same note you and I were looking at, but that note is never referenced anywhere.
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, so, and I'll, I'll just say at full disclosure here, um, I think it's, CWS has been very accommodating to make sure that the days, these learning days are interesting to us, but beyond that, you know, there's no incentive for us to read our package, to speak on behalf of CWS, or go out of our way. And, you know, it's like, why bother? So, I'm incentivized by, what am I getting paid to do? So.
I don't think I agree with that statement.
I said I.
Okay, I said I don't agree with that statement. I think, you know, I, I sense a lot of value here, and I don't know, we could certainly have a conversation about it, but I don't think I'd ever tell anybody that I don't get paid for it, I don't see a value to it, but that's just me.
I respond, for me, for my time, is, what am I getting out of it? And I'm tired of putting out more than I'm getting value of. And I've always, I, I said this last year, I think, but the way I see it isn't, like, this is my own interpretation here. The Salary Commission sets the Commissioner's salary, we're also the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. Um, so I always saw that the Clean Water Services should reimburse county, not necessarily me, as a Commissioner, I'm hitched to the Service Salary Commission, so I, I think that's where the conversation, the conversation I've had with Tonya and Diane and bringing up here was around county getting reimbursed, because we do work as one, even though we're providing, overseeing two districts, two different entities. Um, we're one Washington County, so, and so that's how I, so, and I still stand firm unless an attorney wants to correct me, but I think to pay is in the county side, going to the county, but the Salary Commission doesn't, they, they're paying us less than Loma County Commissioners, right? So the Salary Commission has not looked at what we do for our CWS responsibilities.
Has it looked at the housing?
No.
Just roll us separately?
No, yeah, no.
So all three of those, I mean, all of them.
So maybe it'd be helpful to go through what current law is and what are some of the options before us? Uh, so we have just a couple of slides on that, help further inform the conversation. So, under the Organized Statute, uh, one ninety-eight, one ninety, for special districts, members of every bodies of a district may not, may receive an amount not to exceed fifty dollars a day each or portion thereof, so capped at fifty dollars a day for their service as a special district board member. Uh, this goes on to say that reimbursement is permitted for travel, uh, which is something that CWS currently does. And, um, the amount can be set by the board, it just needs to be voted on by a mandatory member to decide what level of, of compensation. Now, if we were to do the maximum allowable, looking at two-hundred-and-sixty days, working, working days in a year, that's approximately thirteen thousand dollars for board member, sixty-five thousand dollars total to Clean Water Services. Conversely, you can.
When we take four weeks off from our business, is that part of the two-sixty?
Please, so, I can revise it down. Firstly, you could do a random model, right, and just look at board learning days, budget days, add some additional time for preparations, reading packet materials in-state travel, out-of-state travel, you could look at doing a half-day or a whole day, but it, there really is a lot of flexibility under the statute, but it's still that fifty-dollar cap. And that, that's the foundation that we were looking at as far as what state law committed, how we currently operate. What are the options in trying to be responsive to the church's request for a look at compensation?
Isn't the two-sixty just the number of workdays there to fifty, or I mean, you're.
Yeah, it's fifty-two, ten-five, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to be vague, I appreciate the attempt to sort of have something simple to understand, I, I get that intuitively.
So, I'm trying to figure out, I was just looking at my, um, calculations. So, mine are very similar to yours, but I use the forty-eight, um, forty-eight weeks since we take the four off, and also, uh, accounting for a general effort of what it takes to read the budget and come prepared and whatnot, so that's where I came. And then, you know, reading the, the packets, uh, that's where I came to four work weeks of work. So, four worked, work weeks of work out of forty-eight weeks. And so I came to eight-point-three percent versus five percent. And I think was just pulled out of the air.
So what's that number? It's eight-point-three percent of a million two-twenty-nine, is that what you're saying?
I don't, I'm not following what your math is.
And I can't do eight-point-three percent as a million two-twenty-nine if I had, so I was just wondering.
I don't know whether the million two-twenty-nine is this.
That's your number here, it's your total, the total, so.
That's the county number from counties.
Yeah.
You have to minus the five percent. That's up here. So, that's why I can't do that.
Do you want five percent of the one-two-two-nine-three-three-one?
You have to minus the five percent out of that, so minus the thirty-one K that's up there.
So one of the questions for the group is, really, the upper half would be the sixty-five thousand per year. If you were to think of it in terms of eight-point-three percent of your overall time, as long as that amount was under sixty-five thousand dollars.
That's sixty-five thousand divided by five.
Correct. Per individual, yeah.
Question here, I, I've been thinking about, we're looking at regulations around special districts, and I, I understand about that. But the reality is that we're elected not to, to hold the seat that includes the, the oversight of the monitors, that's.
And the Housing Authority of Washington.
And the, and the House, yes.
So our other strategy is, and so have the Salary Commission.
Exactly, it seems to me that if that's what our mandate is by election, that's what the Salary Commission should be looking at in relationship to what our responsibilities are. Because this situation is different than a board member for TDFNR or a board member for THPRD or whoever, they are elected solely for that role. But to me, it's, this is a different relationship, because our relationship to Clean Water Services is very complex. It's not just as a standalone special.
It's not just as a standalone special district. So it it seems to be the Salary Commission is where this should re- rest instead of looking at the special district.
Well, they they could probably determine what part of the salary they're determining to be related to CWS activities and therefore. Charge that back.
And I hear that in the meantime. That of the five percent, eight point three percent. Right now, our amount might post it. So uh. I went each quarter, reading packets for CWS and uh for exec sessions. I said, okay, two days per quarter. There are four quarters, that's eight days. Uh plus we have three learning days, one budget day, and I estimated two days to read the budget. So that's fourteen days. Plus there are occasional CWS events, so I put, okay, one day of events per year, that's fifteen days. That's three work weeks. Plus, if you go on a CWS trip, that's one week per year. That's four weeks out of the forty-eight that we have business. So I did. Use my handy dandy calculator and that was eight point three percent. And I'd say that our management responsibilities go past what, you know, what the what the hours are, you know, I mean, you think about. Diane, I I've had lots of conversations with you, I've had conversations with Caroline or or Joe or whatever, along with all of our males and all that is. It's part of our role here. And also, you know, I I've read all the minutes. Uh to the two Salary Commissions and reread the reports and. Uh from the minutes, it's interesting to see how they decided, really because it was easier for them. Uh they did a whole bunch of averages and went, oh, okay, the chair will just give her ten percent more than the district commissioners. And I'm like, um, cool, I could pull away that. So that's what I'm doing. Well, I think we, this is the year of our Salary Commission review, right? We, but we don't have a Salary Commission.
Exactly.
Exactly, we must. We don't, we need to put people for the top.
I see. And that would be if anything July, when we're gonna see if they pay the salary, right?
Yep.
Outside of that. Yeah, but. The money has to be allocated.
Yeah, I was gonna say it has to.
That's part, that's what I want, that's.
Or we make, or we make a budget amendment to fix it.
Currently, the reimbursement is thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight ninety-five cents currently.
Yep.
And I think that, I think, I think for planning purposes, with this, whatever the Salary Commission does. And the amount of contribution that is evaluated, it's certainly going to be higher. For the future.
Yeah, so with this analysis of eight point three percent, then with these numbers of the. That were presented, it'd be fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and twenty-six cents would be the reimbursement back to the county. And that's below the thirty, um, the max that's set by statute of sixty-five thousand.
Set by statute for a special district.
For ORS and with special district, yeah. And there's also a secondary question is that number has never changed since.
Nineties.
The nineties, so um given how Washington Counties work with the Salary Commission, maybe that's a reason to look at. Getting that changed. To have a more methodology, yeah. Or if we consideration that our situation is not. The same as a special district.
Right, so we we need to get some language in there that gives us.
Your, okay, yeah.
I understood. Okay, but you know, I I think if I, if you ask me, how much work do I do in a year? You know, I just, you just said, what do you think? I'd say probably eighteen, twenty percent. And I don't know if that's.
I was gonna say at least fifteen, but I think that's just more.
So, but. That's where I just tried to conservatively look at. How many days do we actually set aside for any day that's an approximate? Like, also, I want to say, I think that's the good news. You know, I mean, yes, we are engaged here. We are, you know, I've. Always pated in what's happening, where my, what's my role here? How can I engage? Diane is a part of our weekly uh meetings. You provide an update to us. We're. We don't lose touch in between those dates that you had, you talked about as being, you know, in the, in our seats.
Yeah, yeah.
In our services.
Yep.
Sometimes we don't want to be, when you do.
You call me the bad guy?
Yeah.
So you have two things you could do. The one question is, do you want to us to work with the county to modify their current plan for twenty-four, twenty-five? And if not, do we want to then modify the charges coming for twenty-five, twenty-six? And to have Clean Water Services um the budget? We'd probably budget the sixty-five thousand um. I think.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Safe budget. But I think the Salary Commission's got a misword there.
That that's, that's out of my mind. And what's good about that is we could utilize it for a legislative change that, so right now it's fifty dollars a day. Or if you've done some kind of study, you know, we we could put some language in there that will allow it uh more than fifty dollars a day.
Personally, I don't, I I have to be convinced. That a legislative change is really what we need because I don't want to take on the responsibility of a legislative change that affects special districts. Throughout because I think that we are in such a niche situation that I don't want that, you know, I don't want to stand our political chips frankly. On that. And I'd ask for a legal opinion as to whether or not our situation is different enough. That it would require a legislative change.
And then the section of statute that's not quoted here, the the. One preceding section, one ninety-eight, one eighty specifically pulls in. Uh ORS four fifty-one, special districts with ORS one ninety and and that's sort of list. So it does. It does contemplate the county service districts are included in this.
I mean, the fifty dollars a day thing, also if you're applying it to the days that work is being done, it's like. What is that, seven dollars and something an hour for a full day of work? Like, it doesn't.
Yeah.
That might have made sense in the nineties. It's twenty twenty-five, like, that just doesn't, that kind of like, doesn't even make sense anymore. I don't know.
But I don't think that's our responsibility.
No, it's not ours to figure out. I agree.
Um, I don't know that I understood what you said in this with about.
So the, there's a definition in the statute just before uh. Before we, just before, oh, this part, yes, part, right, yeah. So one ninety-eight point one eighty. Lists out all of the types of special districts that are captured in this language and it specifically calls out ORS four fifty-one county service districts. So it does contemplate.
With county service districts, does that imply county service districts that have the responsibility under the county commissioners?
Yeah.
It does, uh, okay.
And it's, yeah. And I just don't know, are there others around? There are, but there aren't a lot. But we not be adorable, you want there. But, yeah, I, it's something that we can certainly also raise.
I didn't understand. I was.
Yeah, 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 we, I mean, this was the kind of. The meat, meat of it. So, so Commissioner Teresa, what you're saying is, I think all of this should be part for a truer analysis with Salary Commission. There could be room to go up, which is set for the Salary Commission. And the question, I think my understanding correctly is, does this statute then come in and trump that conversation and limit it? So that Salary Commission is over here, we're mo- we are governed by this. The answer is we are governed by this specifically under four fifty-one because like. Uh Elizabeth said that one ninety-eight, one, one ninety does incorporate prime reference and pull in four fifty-one. So by that reference, it limits us. So I don't think the Salary Commission could trump the legislative language. So we would be stuck having to say, mother, may I? Can we go up? I think.
It's also incumbent upon each of us, all five of us, to ensure that we are providing. Really thorough, comprehensive information to the Salary Commission and having reread. Not watch the YouTube, just reading the minutes. I don't agree with some of the positioning by Washington County staff. It definitely represented the condition of pre twenty nineteen.
Hmm, yeah.
So pre twenty, but I think what you're saying is it represented the position pre twenty nineteen of. Halftime commissioners and a board that had different philosophy.
Yep.
And just to put a finer point on.
We don't need to do that.
Hmm. Okay, so I'm I'm wondering, I thought we were talking about. A reimbursement formula that Clean Water Services was gonna pay Washington County for. The part that we participate as the board with Clean Water Services. And then the second part to that was, we were gonna go to the Compensation Committee and say, okay, look, if this. Need to have a better definition, understanding of the definition of what is the scope of what we do. So then they would say, okay, we will adjust your compensation recommendation to this. So those two to me are bifurcated. So are we talking about just today was the reimbursement formula? And I thought I heard Elizabeth say we're capped at sixty-five thousand?
For five. It's thirteen per year, per quarter.
Yep.
It's on slide five.
Jerry, I think it's both that are being discussed right now.
Uh-huh. Yeah, parallel.
I know, I, they are bifurcated, it's not love, but they're related, but I think we're talking about both.
And I do think that it's not just thirteen per year. I think you have to bring into a point with that the chair is ten percent higher, at least. I mean, that's where, that's where we are now. So I'm just saying that that.
We're closing the sixty-five.
Yeah, I, and I'm only bringing that point up on the side.
Okay.
But it is both in my mind because they're inextricably linked. You can't really.
Yeah, but the the Compensation Committee. Conversation is gonna be different than this. We're just talking about, can we justify this? And it sounded like we can justify this or something in there. And so, and that's gonna be a reimbursement back to the county, so. And then the conversation with Compensation Committee is separate. That's what it sounds like to me.
Except that the Compensation Committee has to be aware of the full picture.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not for this discussion.
I don't know why we're, yeah, connecting on this. I know, I'm right there with you.
I don't, I just, you know, if.
So I think what you're saying is, if we get sixty-five K. Assuming for purposes of discussion only, that we can get sixty-five. The sixty-five goes to the county. And that's resolved. That's what the conversation could be today. Once the sixty-five is in the county's treasure, then your question is, okay, let's go to the Commissioner and say, look. We don't, we're not just the county commissioners. We also have to do this. They reimburse the county for the time that we're away from the county for as much as they can. But this number doesn't reflect the totality of my responsibilities once I got elected. And so I want you to do a salary, a commission review with the understanding that I've taken on this extra chunk. That is limited by statute, but that limit goes directly to the county because we have to step away from county responsibilities when we go over to the district. And so you make that case and you hope that they say, yeah, you're right, you do get more money and you got the sixty-five in the bank to help you.
There's another important clarification here that I realized we're kind of maybe missing in this. Is the sixty-five is related only to like on Sheriff Harrington's document, the thirty-one thousand. Diane, you would need the budget. I mean, there's still all these other expenses. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody.
Yeah, correct.
We keep talking about sixty-five, but that's just for one of the.
Oh, it's just that one idea. So essentially. They provide, I would be providing the sixty-five for the board and an additional thirty-one thousand for everything else.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, just want to be clear.
Or whatever the goal is adjusted to. And I think one of the other reasons, and for me. Catherine, I think you, you know, you've teed this up, but for me, the discussion also includes, does this seem. Is this legitimate? I mean, my thoughts here, that would be.
Reasonable?
It's a reasonable, thank you. That's the two.
I believe you easily spend thirteen thousand dollars a year with Clean Water Services. I I also believe that the statute is old and it has not been updated.
And the Association of Special Districts should take this on, not ask.
Yes, that's where it rests in my mind. They should.
I mean, in the other, I'm gonna, I I'm not advocating for this, but I do want to point the math part of this out. Like, the two hundred and sixty days is working days, but the board is providing oversight all of the days. I think if you had to argue, you could probably argue, I, again, this doesn't relate to the direct salary conversation, but for the county's purposes. You might be able to argue that fifty times three sixty-five, I don't. Like, what's magical about the two sixty?
What's a working day?
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, I know that's where I came from, but it's not like the oversight doesn't happen on the weekends or whatever.
Because it receives amount not exceed a fifty dollars for each day. So there's three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's really the.
I don't know what's important distinction, but I was pointing it out.
Well, that's where I just functioned in terms of weeks.
Yeah.
So. Moving forward. Diane outlined a couple of kind of key questions uh that I I want to raise back to. Um. One is for current year, we have an invoice for twenty-four, twenty-five uh that. Uh, no, it's earlier. It looks like this. We can, we can update it to reflect the eight point three percent. Um. Looking ahead. What I'm hearing is the board is interested in us ensuring that we allocate at least that's sixty-five thousand. Uh that will go into further compensation around uh the discussion of the Salary Commission. And then we'll determine. From that, the.
I know, you're going to read to that.
So, is that, okay. Just confirming. So we'll work with um the county administration to do that adjustment for the boards by. Yeah, eight point three, that's the.
The other comment that I want to make is that when we have these discussions, it makes me frankly feel just a little bit uncomfortable. But as we had this discussion earlier about Skoggins Dion and the future boards. This conversation is not just about this board, but it's about future boards as well. So I I I just want to say that, that I think it's our responsibility to appropriately reflect so that as. Our future boards run for election, they have the benefit of our positioning around compensation. All of you have the decision, right?
So then, do folks still come from moving on to the second half of this? Yeah, all right. Um. So our recommendation for travel. This year is the uh DC Water Week Policy Plan. We got the teaser this morning. Uh Sheriff Harrington has presently been attending uh in representing Clean Water Services in DC. Uh. We recommend one to two members of the board uh be able to participate in this advocacy opportunity. And then the other travel opportunity uh is WETTEC. Uh that happens in the fall.
And uh I thought WETTEC was great for our first year. I haven't been since, but I don't feel like I'm missing anything. I I found that attending the NACWA conference last summer when Diane was being sworn in. Gave me a much better appreciation.
Gave me a much better appreciation for the policy and legal work of NACWA. But it's not like they don't have something special for boards or electeds or anything like that. So I can't see going to that year over year with tech. For NACWA, okay, I lost that for you. And uh so. In terms of a strategy, those of you who have been to WEFTEC either year over year or multiple times. I can't speak to the value of going to WEP as a board member. In a repeated fashion.
I think at this table, it's Jerry and me that have been to WEFTEC twice, right?
That's true.
And what I would say at the last WEFTEC. One of the biggest advantages for me is walking the floor. With with our staff and saying, here's what we're talking about when we're looking at this innovation, and here's the vendor. And here, and then the vendor does the presentation to us. And then we'll look at other pieces that are that accomplish the same type of work, for me, that. That was very beneficial. The uh uh perfectly honest, the the sessions are like. So, but I do learn a tremendous amount being with staff. That's Jerry.
Yeah, I I would agree with that, I mean. You don't go to WEFTEC to be experts. You go to WEFTEC to just get a little sniff of what it is that we do. What Clean Water Services does, and then we can actually communicate from from my standpoint, in the dum-dum language. That uh how this whole process works and the challenges, you know, we don't understand that, we don't have the solutions, but the challenges that the industry. Goes through and will continue to go through, so to me, it's a, I enjoy WEFTEC, I agree with you. The stations, but we had the same thing in Toronto.
Yeah.
Good grief. So, but you know, that's why you bring home little snippets of smarter stuff, so that's that's why I think WEFTEC particularly is important.
And I would remind you all that you'll have the International Water Week opportunity in the summer of twenty twenty-six. And I think that might be something. Which is for Director Snyder you wanna look into.
I would agree with that.
In all this Glasgow.
Oh, I was gonna say, do we have dates and where? Glasgow.
Is it in August?
August, yes.
And I expressed to Diane and to others that I would, I think that. Going to Copenhagen for IWA was such an amazing experience because of. What was around Copenhagen as well as the as well as the sessions, we had the workshops, the workshops were fabulous.
But Copenhagen also did a just a phenomenal job of their local implementation. Covering that in sessions and work session, I don't know for Toronto, it's.
Well, they had this one to Toronto and uh the visa was there, and Jerry and myself. And we spent so much damn time on the bus.
Yeah.
I mean, it was really, am I right about that? I was just like, oh, my God, it's another hour and a half. It was really. And that is, that's the logistics of the setup there. So, you know, whereas when we were in company, we were going, bing, 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 we saw so much more in such as.
Yeah, so much was implemented right there publicly. And I had no idea, I didn't need to speak that type of difference, and I don't know what if if. Glasgow is gonna be more like.
I would suggest.
Toronto or more like Denmark that way.
Hey, you know.
So that's something that staff can answer to as well.
But but that said. We remember when we were at the, was it the the waste treatment plant that was. Where they're digging the the um they were taking the heat.
Oh, yeah.
And they talked about it today.
So I related that to several discussions, so what I learned. You know, on those ten-hour trips.
It was supposed to be five.
Yeah. With the traffic as well, but it still has, I've I've been able to use that and think about it in numerous different applications, so. Did I learn a lot?
Yeah.
I did. And I.
I usually learn more before, honestly, that's for me in the first part too, it's such a unique experience. To see the technologies that are coming up in the future. To talk to them in person, um that means a lot, and frankly, having the board at WEF to see the operations challenge to go, there's that other. Connection part that we are, that's our time to shine for a lot of folks at Clean Water.
It's reminding us that board members are there for the time to shine.
And I'm also reminding myself, what I heard described was one to two per, and there's five of us, so. Uh we're recommending one to two for DC, two to three for WEP.
And remember, in twenty twenty-five, we may have three new directors. Twenty twenty-seven, two twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So Elizabeth, I'd like to go to the April.
I've never been to the WEFTEC myself. Purposely didn't raise my hand last year, but. A part of that was because you went to IWA. So so it's the other commissioners, Sheriff Harrington. So. But. I would like to go this.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. But um if I am. He, if there's no other commissioners, I I do make arrangements with my schedule with. I don't like other commissioners.
Did you just do?
Yeah, I think we have.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. We're also adding, we're gonna have a little bit of additional capacity in our budget for additional DC advocacy. Just in case, um we don't know if we're going to need to go back uh into fall for some reason.
Well, that's the one.
Oh, that would be twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah. So for planning purposes, we're we're trying to.
So just so that y'all know, I'm going to be in DC for Work Systems Inc. The week before the Water Week. And the agreement that I have with Work Systems Inc. for if there's anything that. We need to advocate for for the county, I can. Work outside of their schedule, and I would say the same thing applies here, if there's a call or. You know, coffee you want me to have.
That you can't set up a flight.
Yeah.
Where where is WEFTEC in the same place every year, or is it move around?
Chicago.
Okay, so you um you can tentatively put me down for that for this year as well.
That's kind of it.
Actually, the best travel we do when we do this CWS pick me on.
Yeah, that's where we know it's from, we have it every year. So basically. Did you get the information you needed, does this look appropriate, is it meeting your expectations? Thank you very much.
So, uh I think that wraps up. The upper portion of our meeting. And at this juncture, I need to ask for a motion to adjourn to a second session. Pursuant to ORS from ninety-two point six zero to two and F some page. For the purposes of exempt records and potential litigation and ask. That those members of staff who are not related to this topic, that we say thank you and goodbye to. Remo for another good learning day.